Wait, wait before you sign those. Counselors. We're going to make a motion to come out of recess for the executive session. Is there a motion? Is it seconded?
Seconded.
So there's a motion, it was seconded, all is in favor. All is opposed. We're coming out of executive session. Nothing was acted on in executive session, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. All is in favor. All is opposed. So I'll take a roll on that.
Anderson Burgos.
Aye.
Bartley.
To adjourn.
Yes. Bresnahan. Bacon. Valentin. Stand adjourned on the executive session. With that, I'll leave two minutes, three minutes in order to sign the committee jackets.
Wait, wait before you sign those. Counselors. We're going to make a motion to come out of recess for the executive session. Is there a motion? Is it seconded?
Seconded.
So there's a motion, it was seconded, all is in favor. All is opposed. We're coming out of executive session. Nothing was acted on in executive session, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. All is in favor. All is opposed. So I'll take a roll on that.
Anderson Burgos.
Aye.
Bartley.
To adjourn.
Yes. Bresnahan. Bacon. Valentin. Stand adjourned on the executive session. With that, I'll leave two minutes, three minutes in order to sign the committee jackets.
Okay. Wait, wait before you sign those. Counselors.
We're going to make a motion to come out of recess for the executive session. Is there a motion? Is it seconded?
Seconded.
So there's a motion, it was seconded, all is in favor. All is opposed. We're coming out of executive session. Nothing was acted on in executive session, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. All is in favor. All is opposed. So I'll take a roll on that.
Anderson Burgos.
Aye.
Bartley.
To adjourn.
Yes. Bresnahan. Bacon. Valentin. Stand adjourned on the executive session. With that, I'll leave two minutes, three minutes in order to sign the committee jackets.
Okay. Wait, wait before you sign those. Counselors.
We're going to make a motion to come out of recess for the executive session. Is there a motion? Is it seconded?
Seconded.
So there's a motion, it was seconded, all is in favor. All is opposed. We're coming out of executive session. Nothing was acted on in executive session, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. All is in favor. All is opposed. So I'll take a roll on that.
Anderson Burgos.
Aye.
Bartley.
To adjourn.
Yes. Bresnahan. Bacon. Valentin. Stand adjourned on the executive session. With that, I'll leave two minutes, three minutes in order to sign the committee jackets.
Okay. Wait, wait before you sign those. Counselors.
We're going to make a motion to come out of recess for the executive session. Is there a motion? Is it seconded?
Seconded.
So there's a motion, it was seconded, all is in favor. All is opposed. We're coming out of executive session. Nothing was acted on in executive session, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. All is in favor. All is opposed. So I'll take a roll on that.
Anderson Burgos.
Aye.
Bartley.
To adjourn.
Yes. Bresnahan. Bacon. Valentin. Stand adjourned on the executive session. With that, I'll leave two minutes, three minutes in order to sign the committee jackets.
Okay. Wait, wait before you sign those. Counselors.
We're going to make a motion to come out of recess for the executive session. Is there a motion? Is it seconded?
Seconded.
So there's a motion, it was seconded, all is in favor. All is opposed. We're coming out of executive session. Nothing was acted on in executive session, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. All is in favor. All is opposed. So I'll take a roll on that.
Anderson Burgos.
Aye.
Bartley.
To adjourn.
Yes. Bresnahan. Bacon. Valentin. Stand adjourned on the executive session. With that, I'll leave two minutes, three minutes in order to sign the committee jackets.
Okay. Wait, wait before you sign those. Counselors.
We're going to make a motion to come out of recess for the executive session. Is there a motion? Is it seconded?
Seconded.
So there's a motion, it was seconded, all is in favor. All is opposed. We're coming out of executive session. Nothing was acted on in executive session, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. All is in favor. All is opposed. So I'll take a roll on that.
Anderson Burgos.
Aye.
Bartley.
To adjourn.
Yes. Bresnahan. Bacon. Valentin. Stand adjourned on the executive session. With that, I'll leave two minutes, three minutes in order to sign the committee jackets.
Okay. Wait, wait before you sign those. Counselors.
We're going to make a motion to come out of recess for the executive session. Is there a motion? Is it seconded?
Seconded.
So there's a motion, it was seconded, all is in favor. All is opposed. We're coming out of executive session. Nothing was acted on in executive session, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. All is in favor. All is opposed. So I'll take a roll on that.
Anderson Burgos.
Aye.
Bartley.
To adjourn.
Yes. Bresnahan. Bacon. Valentin. Stand adjourned on the executive session. With that, I'll leave two minutes, three minutes in order to sign the committee jackets.
Okay. Wait, wait before you sign those. Counselors.
We're going to make a motion to come out of recess for the executive session. Is there a motion? Is it seconded?
Seconded.
So there's a motion, it was seconded, all is in favor. All is opposed. We're coming out of executive session. Nothing was acted on in executive session, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. All is in favor. All is opposed. So I'll take a roll on that.
Anderson Burgos.
Aye.
Bartley.
To adjourn.
Yes. Bresnahan. Bacon. Valentin. Stand adjourned on the executive session. With that, I'll leave two minutes, three minutes in order to sign the committee jackets.
Okay. Wait, wait before you sign those. Counselors.
We're going to make a motion to come out of recess for the executive session. Is there a motion? Is it seconded?
Seconded.
So there's a motion, it was seconded, all is in favor. All is opposed. We're coming out of executive session. Nothing was acted on in executive session, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. All is in favor. All is opposed. So I'll take a roll on that.
Anderson Burgos.
Aye.
Bartley.
To adjourn.
Yes. Bresnahan. Bacon. Valentin. Stand adjourned on the executive session. With that, I'll leave two minutes, three minutes in order to sign the committee jackets.
Okay. Wait, wait before you sign those. Counselors.
We're going to make a motion to come out of recess for the executive session. Is there a motion? Is it seconded?
Seconded.
So there's a motion, it was seconded, all is in favor. All is opposed. We're coming out of executive session. Nothing was acted on in executive session, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. All is in favor. All is opposed. So I'll take a roll on that.
Anderson Burgos.
Aye.
Bartley.
To adjourn.
Yes. Bresnahan. Bacon. Valentin. Stand adjourned on the executive session. With that, I'll leave two minutes, three minutes in order to sign the committee jackets.
Okay. Wait, wait before you sign those. Counselors.
We're going to make a motion to come out of recess for the executive session. Is there a motion? Is it seconded?
Seconded.
So there's a motion, it was seconded, all is in favor. All is opposed. We're coming out of executive session. Nothing was acted on in executive session, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. All is in favor. All is opposed. So I'll take a roll on that.
Anderson Burgos.
Aye.
Bartley.
To adjourn.
Yes. Bresnahan. Bacon. Valentin. Stand adjourned on the executive session. With that, I'll leave two minutes, three minutes in order to sign the committee jackets.
Okay. Wait, wait before you sign those. Counselors.
We're going to make a motion to come out of recess for the executive session. Is there a motion? Is it seconded?
Seconded.
So there's a motion, it was seconded, all is in favor. All is opposed. We're coming out of executive session. Nothing was acted on in executive session, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. All is in favor. All is opposed. So I'll take a roll on that.
Anderson Burgos.
Aye.
Bartley.
To adjourn.
Yes. Bresnahan. Bacon. Valentin. Stand adjourned on the executive session. With that, I'll leave two minutes, three minutes in order to sign the committee jackets.
Okay. Wait, wait before you sign those. Counselors.
We're going to make a motion to come out of recess for the executive session. Is there a motion? Is it seconded?
Seconded.
So there's a motion, it was seconded, all is in favor. All is opposed. We're coming out of executive session. Nothing was acted on in executive session, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. All is in favor. All is opposed. So I'll take a roll on that.
Anderson Burgos.
Aye.
Bartley.
To adjourn.
Yes. Bresnahan. Bacon. Valentin. Stand adjourned on the executive session. With that, I'll leave two minutes, three minutes in order to sign the committee jackets.
Okay. Wait, wait before you sign those. Counselors.
We're going to make a motion to come out of recess for the executive session. Is there a motion? Is it seconded?
Seconded.
So there's a motion, it was seconded, all is in favor. All is opposed. We're coming out of executive session. Nothing was acted on in executive session, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. All is in favor. All is opposed. So I'll take a roll on that.
Anderson Burgos.
Aye.
Bartley.
To adjourn.
Yes. Bresnahan. Bacon. Valentin. Stand adjourned on the executive session. With that, I'll leave two minutes, three minutes in order to sign the committee jackets.
Okay. Wait, wait before you sign those. Counselors.
We're going to make a motion to come out of recess for the executive session. Is there a motion? Is it seconded?
Seconded.
So there's a motion, it was seconded, all is in favor. All is opposed. We're coming out of executive session. Nothing was acted on in executive session, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. All is in favor. All is opposed. So I'll take a roll on that.
Anderson Burgos.
Aye.
Bartley.
To adjourn.
Yes. Bresnahan. Bacon. Valentin. Stand adjourned on the executive session. With that, I'll leave two minutes, three minutes in order to sign the committee jackets.
Okay. Wait, wait before you sign those. Counselors.
We're going to make a motion to come out of recess for the executive session. Is there a motion? Is it seconded?
Seconded.
So there's a motion, it was seconded, all is in favor. All is opposed. We're coming out of executive session. Nothing was acted on in executive session, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. All is in favor. All is opposed. So I'll take a roll on that.
Anderson Burgos.
Aye.
Bartley.
To adjourn.
Yes. Bresnahan. Bacon. Valentin. Stand adjourned on the executive session. With that, I'll leave two minutes, three minutes in order to sign the committee jackets.
Okay. Wait, wait before you sign those. Counselors.
We're going to make a motion to come out of recess for the executive session. Is there a motion? Is it seconded?
Seconded.
So there's a motion, it was seconded, all is in favor. All is opposed. We're coming out of executive session. Nothing was acted on in executive session, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. All is in favor. All is opposed. So I'll take a roll on that.
Anderson Burgos.
Aye.
Bartley.
To adjourn.
Yes. Bresnahan. Bacon. Valentin. Stand adjourned on the executive session. With that, I'll leave two minutes, three minutes in order to sign the committee jackets.
Okay. Wait, wait before you sign those. Counselors.
We're going to make a motion to come out of recess for the executive session. Is there a motion? Is it seconded?
Seconded.
So there's a motion, it was seconded, all is in favor. All is opposed. We're coming out of executive session. Nothing was acted on in executive session, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. All is in favor. All is opposed. So I'll take a roll on that.
Anderson Burgos.
Aye.
Bartley.
To adjourn.
Yes. Bresnahan. Bacon. Valentin. Stand adjourned on the executive session. With that, I'll leave two minutes, three minutes in order to sign the committee jackets.
Okay. Wait, wait before you sign those. Counselors.
We're going to make a motion to come out of recess for the executive session. Is there a motion? Is it seconded?
Seconded.
So there's a motion, it was seconded, all is in favor. All is opposed. We're coming out of executive session. Nothing was acted on in executive session, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. All is in favor. All is opposed. So I'll take a roll on that.
Anderson Burgos.
Aye.
Bartley.
To adjourn.
Yes. Bresnahan. Bacon. Valentin. Stand adjourned on the executive session. With that, I'll leave two minutes, three minutes in order to sign the committee jackets.
Okay. Wait, wait before you sign those. Counselors.
We're going to make a motion to come out of recess for the executive session. Is there a motion? Is it seconded?
Seconded.
So there's a motion, it was seconded, all is in favor. All is opposed. We're coming out of executive session. Nothing was acted on in executive session, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. All is in favor. All is opposed. So I'll take a roll on that.
Anderson Burgos.
Aye.
Bartley.
To adjourn.
Yes. Bresnahan. Bacon. Valentin. Stand adjourned on the executive session. With that, I'll leave two minutes, three minutes in order to sign the committee jackets.
Okay. Wait, wait before you sign those. Counselors.
We're going to make a motion to come out of recess for the executive session. Is there a motion? Is it seconded?
Seconded.
So there's a motion, it was seconded, all is in favor. All is opposed. We're coming out of executive session. Nothing was acted on in executive session, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. All is in favor. All is opposed. So I'll take a roll on that.
Anderson Burgos.
Aye.
Bartley.
To adjourn.
Yes. Bresnahan. Bacon. Valentin. Stand adjourned on the executive session. With that, I'll leave two minutes, three minutes in order to sign the committee jackets.
Okay. Wait, wait before you sign those. Counselors.
We're going to make a motion to come out of recess for the executive session. Is there a motion? Is it seconded?
Seconded.
So there's a motion, it was seconded, all is in favor. All is opposed. We're coming out of executive session. Nothing was acted on in executive session, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. All is in favor. All is opposed. So I'll take a roll on that.
Anderson Burgos.
Aye.
Bartley.
To adjourn.
Yes. Bresnahan. Bacon. Valentin. Stand adjourned on the executive session. With that, I'll leave two minutes, three minutes in order to sign the committee jackets.
Okay. Wait, wait before you sign those. Counselors.
We're going to make a motion to come out of recess for the executive session. Is there a motion? Is it seconded?
Seconded.
So there's a motion, it was seconded, all is in favor. All is opposed. We're coming out of executive session. Nothing was acted on in executive session, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. All is in favor. All is opposed. So I'll take a roll on that.
Anderson Burgos.
Aye.
Bartley.
To adjourn.
Yes. Bresnahan. Bacon. Valentin. Stand adjourned on the executive session. With that, I'll leave two minutes, three minutes in order to sign the committee jackets.
Okay. Wait, wait before you sign those. Counselors.
We're going to make a motion to come out of recess for the executive session. Is there a motion? Is it seconded?
Seconded.
So there's a motion, it was seconded, all is in favor. All is opposed. We're coming out of executive session. Nothing was acted on in executive session, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. All is in favor. All is opposed. So I'll take a roll on that.
Anderson Burgos.
Aye.
Bartley.
To adjourn.
Yes. Bresnahan. Bacon. Valentin. Stand adjourned on the executive session. With that, I'll leave two minutes, three minutes in order to sign the committee jackets.
Okay. Wait, wait before you sign those. Counselors.
We're going to make a motion to come out of recess for the executive session. Is there a motion? Is it seconded?
Seconded.
So there's a motion, it was seconded, all is in favor. All is opposed. We're coming out of executive session. Nothing was acted on in executive session, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. All is in favor. All is opposed. So I'll take a roll on that.
Anderson Burgos.
Aye.
Bartley.
To adjourn.
Yes. Bresnahan. Bacon. Valentin. Stand adjourned on the executive session. With that, I'll leave two minutes, three minutes in order to sign the committee jackets.
Okay. Wait, wait before you sign those. Counselors.
We're going to make a motion to come out of recess for the executive session. Is there a motion? Is it seconded?
Seconded.
So there's a motion, it was seconded, all is in favor. All is opposed. We're coming out of executive session. Nothing was acted on in executive session, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. All is in favor. All is opposed. So I'll take a roll on that.
Anderson Burgos.
Aye.
Bartley.
To adjourn.
Yes. Bresnahan. Bacon. Valentin. Stand adjourned on the executive session. With that, I'll leave two minutes, three minutes in order to sign the committee jackets.
Okay. Wait, wait before you sign those. Counselors.
We're going to make a motion to come out of recess for the executive session. Is there a motion? Is it seconded?
Seconded.
So there's a motion, it was seconded, all is in favor. All is opposed. We're coming out of executive session. Nothing was acted on in executive session, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. All is in favor. All is opposed. So I'll take a roll on that.
Anderson Burgos.
Aye.
Bartley.
To adjourn.
Yes. Bresnahan. Bacon. Valentin. Stand adjourned on the executive session. With that, I'll leave two minutes, three minutes in order to sign the committee jackets.
Okay. Wait, wait before you sign those. Counselors.
We're going to make a motion to come out of recess for the executive session. Is there a motion? Is it seconded?
Seconded.
So there's a motion, it was seconded, all is in favor. All is opposed. We're coming out of executive session. Nothing was acted on in executive session, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. All is in favor. All is opposed. So I'll take a roll on that.
Anderson Burgos.
Aye.
Bartley.
To adjourn.
Yes. Bresnahan. Bacon. Valentin. Stand adjourned on the executive session. With that, I'll leave two minutes, three minutes in order to sign the committee jackets.
Okay. Wait, wait before you sign those. Counselors.
We're going to make a motion to come out of recess for the executive session. Is there a motion? Is it seconded?
Seconded.
So there's a motion, it was seconded, all is in favor. All is opposed. We're coming out of executive session. Nothing was acted on in executive session, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. All is in favor. All is opposed. So I'll take a roll on that.
Anderson Burgos.
Aye.
Bartley.
To adjourn.
Yes. Bresnahan. Bacon. Valentin. Stand adjourned on the executive session. With that, I'll leave two minutes, three minutes in order to sign the committee jackets.
Okay. Wait, wait before you sign those. Counselors.
We're going to make a motion to come out of recess for the executive session. Is there a motion? Is it seconded?
Seconded.
So there's a motion, it was seconded, all is in favor. All is opposed. We're coming out of executive session. Nothing was acted on in executive session, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. All is in favor. All is opposed. So I'll take a roll on that.
Anderson Burgos.
Aye.
Bartley.
To adjourn.
Yes. Bresnahan. Bacon. Valentin. Stand adjourned on the executive session. With that, I'll leave two minutes, three minutes in order to sign the committee jackets.
Okay. Wait, wait before you sign those. Counselors.
We're going to make a motion to come out of recess for the executive session. Is there a motion? Is it seconded?
Seconded.
So there's a motion, it was seconded, all is in favor. All is opposed. We're coming out of executive session. Nothing was acted on in executive session, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. All is in favor. All is opposed. So I'll take a roll on that.
Anderson Burgos.
Aye.
Bartley.
To adjourn.
Yes. Bresnahan. Bacon. Valentin. Stand adjourned on the executive session. With that, I'll leave two minutes, three minutes in order to sign the committee jackets.
Okay. Wait, wait before you sign those. Counselors.
We're going to make a motion to come out of recess for the executive session. Is there a motion? Is it seconded?
Seconded.
So there's a motion, it was seconded, all is in favor. All is opposed. We're coming out of executive session. Nothing was acted on in executive session, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. All is in favor. All is opposed. So I'll take a roll on that.
Anderson Burgos.
Aye.
Bartley.
To adjourn.
Yes. Bresnahan. Bacon. Valentin. Stand adjourned on the executive session. With that, I'll leave two minutes, three minutes in order to sign the committee jackets.
Okay. Wait, wait before you sign those. Counselors.
We're going to make a motion to come out of recess for the executive session. Is there a motion? Is it seconded?
Seconded.
So there's a motion, it was seconded, all is in favor. All is opposed. We're coming out of executive session. Nothing was acted on in executive session, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. All is in favor. All is opposed. So I'll take a roll on that.
Anderson Burgos.
Aye.
Bartley.
To adjourn.
Yes. Bresnahan. Bacon. Valentin. Stand adjourned on the executive session. With that, I'll leave two minutes, three minutes in order to sign the committee jackets.
Okay. Wait, wait before you sign those. Counselors.
We're going to make a motion to come out of recess for the executive session. Is there a motion? Is it seconded?
Seconded.
So there's a motion, it was seconded, all is in favor. All is opposed. We're coming out of executive session. Nothing was acted on in executive session, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. All is in favor. All is opposed. So I'll take a roll on that.
Anderson Burgos.
Aye.
Bartley.
To adjourn.
Yes. Bresnahan. Bacon. Valentin. Stand adjourned on the executive session. With that, I'll leave two minutes, three minutes in order to sign the committee jackets.
Okay. Wait, wait before you sign those. Counselors.
We're going to make a motion to come out of recess for the executive session. Is there a motion? Is it seconded?
Seconded.
So there's a motion, it was seconded, all is in favor. All is opposed. We're coming out of executive session. Nothing was acted on in executive session, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. All is in favor. All is opposed. So I'll take a roll on that.
Anderson Burgos.
Aye.
Bartley.
To adjourn.
Yes. Bresnahan. Bacon. Valentin. Stand adjourned on the executive session. With that, I'll leave two minutes, three minutes in order to sign the committee jackets.
Okay. Wait, wait before you sign those. Counselors.
We're going to make a motion to come out of recess for the executive session. Is there a motion? Is it seconded?
Seconded.
So there's a motion, it was seconded, all is in favor. All is opposed. We're coming out of executive session. Nothing was acted on in executive session, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. All is in favor. All is opposed. So I'll take a roll on that.
Anderson Burgos.
Aye.
Bartley.
To adjourn.
Yes. Bresnahan. Bacon. Valentin. Stand adjourned on the executive session. With that, I'll leave two minutes, three minutes in order to sign the committee jackets.
Okay. Wait, wait before you sign those. Counselors.
We're going to make a motion to come out of recess for the executive session. Is there a motion? Is it seconded?
Seconded.
So there's a motion, it was seconded, all is in favor. All is opposed. We're coming out of executive session. Nothing was acted on in executive session, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. All is in favor. All is opposed. So I'll take a roll on that.
Anderson Burgos.
Aye.
Bartley.
To adjourn.
Yes. Bresnahan. Bacon. Valentin. Stand adjourned on the executive session. With that, I'll leave two minutes, three minutes in order to sign the committee jackets.
Okay. Wait, wait before you sign those. Counselors.
We're going to make a motion to come out of recess for the executive session. Is there a motion? Is it seconded?
Seconded.
So there's a motion, it was seconded, all is in favor. All is opposed. We're coming out of executive session. Nothing was acted on in executive session, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. All is in favor. All is opposed. So I'll take a roll on that.
Anderson Burgos.
Aye.
Bartley.
To adjourn.
Yes. Bresnahan. Bacon. Valentin. Stand adjourned on the executive session. With that, I'll leave two minutes, three minutes in order to sign the committee jackets.
Okay. Wait, wait before you sign those. Counselors.
We're going to make a motion to come out of recess for the executive session. Is there a motion? Is it seconded?
Seconded.
So there's a motion, it was seconded, all is in favor. All is opposed. We're coming out of executive session. Nothing was acted on in executive session, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. All is in favor. All is opposed. So I'll take a roll on that.
Anderson Burgos.
Aye.
Bartley.
To adjourn.
Yes. Bresnahan. Bacon. Valentin. Stand adjourned on the executive session. With that, I'll leave two minutes, three minutes in order to sign the committee jackets.
Okay. Wait, wait before you sign those. Counselors.
We're going to make a motion to come out of recess for the executive session. Is there a motion? Is it seconded?
Seconded.
So there's a motion, it was seconded, all is in favor. All is opposed. We're coming out of executive session. Nothing was acted on in executive session, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. All is in favor. All is opposed. So I'll take a roll on that.
Anderson Burgos.
Aye.
Bartley.
To adjourn.
Yes. Bresnahan. Bacon. Valentin. Stand adjourned on the executive session. With that, I'll leave two minutes, three minutes in order to sign the committee jackets.
Okay. Wait, wait before you sign those. Counselors.
We're going to make a motion to come out of recess for the executive session. Is there a motion? Is it seconded?
Seconded.
So there's a motion, it was seconded, all is in favor. All is opposed. We're coming out of executive session. Nothing was acted on in executive session, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. All is in favor. All is opposed. So I'll take a roll on that.
Anderson Burgos.
Aye.
Bartley.
To adjourn.
Yes. Bresnahan. Bacon. Valentin. Stand adjourned on the executive session. With that, I'll leave two minutes, three minutes in order to sign the committee jackets.
Okay. Wait, wait before you sign those. Counselors.
We're going to make a motion to come out of recess for the executive session. Is there a motion? Is it seconded?
Seconded.
So there's a motion, it was seconded, all is in favor. All is opposed. We're coming out of executive session. Nothing was acted on in executive session, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. All is in favor. All is opposed. So I'll take a roll on that.
Anderson Burgos.
Aye.
Bartley.
To adjourn.
Yes. Bresnahan. Bacon. Valentin. Stand adjourned on the executive session. With that, I'll leave two minutes, three minutes in order to sign the committee jackets.
Okay. Wait, wait before you sign those. Counselors.
We're going to make a motion to come out of recess for the executive session. Is there a motion? Is it seconded?
Seconded.
So there's a motion, it was seconded, all is in favor. All is opposed. We're coming out of executive session. Nothing was acted on in executive session, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. All is in favor. All is opposed. So I'll take a roll on that.
Anderson Burgos.
Aye.
Bartley.
To adjourn.
Yes. Bresnahan. Bacon. Valentin. Stand adjourned on the executive session. With that, I'll leave two minutes, three minutes in order to sign the committee jackets.
Okay. Wait, wait before you sign those. Counselors.
We're going to make a motion to come out of recess for the executive session. Is there a motion? Is it seconded?
Seconded.
So there's a motion, it was seconded, all is in favor. All is opposed. We're coming out of executive session. Nothing was acted on in executive session, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. All is in favor. All is opposed. So I'll take a roll on that.
Anderson Burgos.
Aye.
Bartley.
To adjourn.
Yes. Bresnahan. Bacon. Valentin. Stand adjourned on the executive session. With that, I'll leave two minutes, three minutes in order to sign the committee jackets.
Okay. Wait, wait before you sign those. Counselors.
We're going to make a motion to come out of recess for the executive session. Is there a motion? Is it seconded?
Seconded.
So there's a motion, it was seconded, all is in favor. All is opposed. We're coming out of executive session. Nothing was acted on in executive session, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. All is in favor. All is opposed. So I'll take a roll on that.
Anderson Burgos.
Aye.
Bartley.
To adjourn.
Yes. Bresnahan. Bacon. Valentin. Stand adjourned on the executive session. With that, I'll leave two minutes, three minutes in order to sign the committee jackets.
Okay. Wait, wait before you sign those. Counselors.
We're going to make a motion to come out of recess for the executive session. Is there a motion? Is it seconded?
Seconded.
So there's a motion, it was seconded, all is in favor. All is opposed. We're coming out of executive session. Nothing was acted on in executive session, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. All is in favor. All is opposed. So I'll take a roll on that.
Anderson Burgos.
Aye.
Bartley.
To adjourn.
Yes. Bresnahan. Bacon. Valentin. Stand adjourned on the executive session. With that, I'll leave two minutes, three minutes in order to sign the committee jackets.
Okay. Wait, wait before you sign those. Counselors.
We're going to make a motion to come out of recess for the executive session. Is there a motion? Is it seconded?
Seconded.
So there's a motion, it was seconded, all is in favor. All is opposed. We're coming out of executive session. Nothing was acted on in executive session, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. All is in favor. All is opposed. So I'll take a roll on that.
Anderson Burgos.
Aye.
Bartley.
To adjourn.
Yes. Bresnahan. Bacon. Valentin. Stand adjourned on the executive session. With that, I'll leave two minutes, three minutes in order to sign the committee jackets.
Okay. Wait, wait before you sign those. Counselors.
We're going to make a motion to come out of recess for the executive session. Is there a motion? Is it seconded?
Seconded.
So there's a motion, it was seconded, all is in favor. All is opposed. We're coming out of executive session. Nothing was acted on in executive session, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. All is in favor. All is opposed. So I'll take a roll on that.
Anderson Burgos.
Aye.
Bartley.
To adjourn.
Yes. Bresnahan. Bacon. Valentin. Stand adjourned on the executive session. With that, I'll leave two minutes, three minutes in order to sign the committee jackets.
Okay. Wait, wait before you sign those. Counselors.
We're going to make a motion to come out of recess for the executive session. Is there a motion? Is it seconded?
Seconded.
So there's a motion, it was seconded, all is in favor. All is opposed. We're coming out of executive session. Nothing was acted on in executive session, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. All is in favor. All is opposed. So I'll take a roll on that.
Anderson Burgos.
Aye.
Bartley.
To adjourn.
Yes. Bresnahan. Bacon. Valentin. Stand adjourned on the executive session. With that, I'll leave two minutes, three minutes in order to sign the committee jackets.
Okay. Wait, wait before you sign those. Counselors.
We're going to make a motion to come out of recess for the executive session. Is there a motion? Is it seconded?
Seconded.
So there's a motion, it was seconded, all is in favor. All is opposed. We're coming out of executive session. Nothing was acted on in executive session, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. All is in favor. All is opposed. So I'll take a roll on that.
Anderson Burgos.
Aye.
Bartley.
To adjourn.
Yes. Bresnahan. Bacon. Valentin. Stand adjourned on the executive session. With that, I'll leave two minutes, three minutes in order to sign the committee jackets.
Okay. Wait, wait before you sign those. Counselors.
We're going to make a motion to come out of recess for the executive session. Is there a motion? Is it seconded?
Seconded.
So there's a motion, it was seconded, all is in favor. All is opposed. We're coming out of executive session. Nothing was acted on in executive session, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. All is in favor. All is opposed. So I'll take a roll on that.
Anderson Burgos.
Aye.
Bartley.
To adjourn.
Yes. Bresnahan. Bacon. Valentin. Stand adjourned on the executive session. With that, I'll leave two minutes, three minutes in order to sign the committee jackets.
Okay. Wait, wait before you sign those. Counselors.
We're going to make a motion to come out of recess for the executive session. Is there a motion? Is it seconded?
Seconded.
So there's a motion, it was seconded, all is in favor. All is opposed. We're coming out of executive session. Nothing was acted on in executive session, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. All is in favor. All is opposed. So I'll take a roll on that.
Anderson Burgos.
Aye.
Bartley.
To adjourn.
Yes. Bresnahan. Bacon. Valentin. Stand adjourned on the executive session. With that, I'll leave two minutes, three minutes in order to sign the committee jackets.
Okay. Wait, wait before you sign those. Counselors.
We're going to make a motion to come out of recess for the executive session. Is there a motion? Is it seconded?
Seconded.
So there's a motion, it was seconded, all is in favor. All is opposed. We're coming out of executive session. Nothing was acted on in executive session, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. All is in favor. All is opposed. So I'll take a roll on that.
Anderson Burgos.
Aye.
Bartley.
To adjourn.
Yes. Bresnahan. Bacon. Valentin. Stand adjourned on the executive session. With that, I'll leave two minutes, three minutes in order to sign the committee jackets.
Okay. Wait, wait before you sign those. Counselors.
We're going to make a motion to come out of recess for the executive session. Is there a motion? Is it seconded?
Seconded.
So there's a motion, it was seconded, all is in favor. All is opposed. We're coming out of executive session. Nothing was acted on in executive session, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. All is in favor. All is opposed. So I'll take a roll on that.
Anderson Burgos.
Aye.
Bartley.
To adjourn.
Yes. Bresnahan. Bacon. Valentin. Stand adjourned on the executive session. With that, I'll leave two minutes, three minutes in order to sign the committee jackets.
Okay. Wait, wait before you sign those. Counselors.
We're going to make a motion to come out of recess for the executive session. Is there a motion? Is it seconded?
Seconded.
So there's a motion, it was seconded, all is in favor. All is opposed. We're coming out of executive session. Nothing was acted on in executive session, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. All is in favor. All is opposed. So I'll take a roll on that.
Anderson Burgos.[1441.11]
As we know, an order was filed to give a proclamation out by Counselor Lisi. It was approved by everybody. So with that, I'll turn over to the maker of the order.
Thank you, President McGee. I didn't know Thomas Wise directly, but I was contacted by a family that felt his loss very, very deeply. And I've come to understand that Thomas Wise was a teacher who really reached not only his colleagues, but so many of the students in our Holyoke Public Schools. So we're here to present a proclamation tonight, but I'd like to just read the words of Gabriel Qualia, whose family was directly impacted by the loss. I think it captures a lot of what folks remember and loved most about Thomas Wise. So Thomas Wise was one of those teachers that everyone at the school knew and loved. I didn't know him personally until this year, but over the past eight years, I saw him and noticed the way he interacted with kids. After school gets out, all the kids just wanted to get out there, but whenever he was outside, kids would seek him out and talk with him. I would notice older kids there, presumably older siblings of his students, excited to go up to talk to him. If he was outside, tell them about their academic actions or just talk about life. Last year Gavin had a struggle with math. He had worked very hard with the tutors at connections to finish with a D, even though he had no problem with any other subject. This year Gavin was very excited to go to school from the very first day. He told us he had a teacher who was cool, but tough too. That he liked a lot, and that teacher made him excited to not only go to school, but to work hard. The week before he passed, Mr. Wise told Gavin that he had the highest math score in his entire grade, which Gavin repeated a lot. Mr. Wise not only helped Gavin achieve a higher level at math in a very short time, but also somehow instilled pride in his academic accomplishments. He joined the student council and started to talk about aspirations for attending college, studying STEM, which I credit Mr. Wise with encouraging him to do some. Mr. Wise, in a few short weeks, was able to instill in my son that which I was unable to do in my 12 years with him. For that, I am eternally grateful. Anytime I mention to him, or any other parent whose children took classes with him, I hear similar stories, and I can't begin to imagine how many children he has inspired. So thank you so much for sharing that story with us. The proclamation is presented to the family of Thomas Wise. And it reads that the Holyoke City Council is presenting an official resolution that extends its congratulations to Thomas Wise in recognition of 12 years of dedicated service to the students of Dunninghoo School, nurturing their minds and spirits with his inherent belief in the abilities of every student. And it's be further resolved that the Holyoke City Council extends its best wishes for continued success, that this resolution be duly signed by the President of the City Council and attested to, and a copy thereof transmitted by the Clerk of the City of Holyoke. Todd McGee, City Council President, and Brenna Murphy McGee, our City Clerk on today's date. So this is for you. I'd like to thank everyone.
It means a lot, thank you. Although we don't live in Holyoke, he invested a lot of time in the school, bringing me in, working with the school, and still working in Dunninghoo School, so it means a lot to us. Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is public comment. Two people have signed up. One of those two people is listed as Brooklyn, New York, so we'd have to suspend our rules to allow.
Motion to suspend the rules.
But before we do the motion, can we ask what it's regards to?
No, it's just to allow people to speak for anything on the agenda. So that's what public comment is, anything that's on the agenda. It is down to a minute and 30 seconds. All right, so a motion was to allow and it was seconded.
Seconded.
All's in favor.
Aye.
First one is Price Armstrong from 57 Park Slope in Hoyoke.
All right, I'll try and keep it under a minute 30. Could I pass out?
Is the mic on? Turn the mic off.
Button on the side?
Right underneath.
Hello? Ah, there we go. Yeah, so my name is Price Armstrong. I live at 57 Park Slope here in Hoyoke. I'm also Vice Chair of the Pedestrian and Bicycle Advisory Committee. That's the capacity in which I come to speak to you fine folks tonight. So as you may be aware, there was state legislation that was recently passed allowing city councils, sorry, cities and towns to pass a blanket 25 mile per hour default speed limit. So this, as I understand it, this regulation would allow, if a city or town adopts it, to make the default speed limit on any roadway that's in a commercial or high-density residential area that's not already signed at some other speed limit. The default would be 25 miles per hour, whereas today it's 30 miles per hour. So last night, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee voted unanimously to recommend to the City Council to adopt a blanket citywide 25 mile per hour default speed limit. And again, this would apply to, as I understand, high-density residential and commercial roadways that are not already signed. So I understand that there's been some discussion already. Mike McManus from DPW was there last night to talk a little bit about it, but we just wanted to give our two cents if this is still in play. What I passed out was just a quick synopsis of why we voted unanimously for the City Council to adopt it citywide on all applicable roadways. The number one reason is just safety. I'll keep this brief. Four months ago, a woman, Zoe Rosenthal, was killed on Lyman Street walking her dog. As Counselor Leahy and Sullivan know, because they're my neighbors, I often walk my dog. And so it hits close to home to think that, to think that, you know, when I'm walking my dog, you know, to a certain extent, I'm taking my life in my hands because there are 2,000-pound metal, piece of metal flying down the street. There's a table here on what I passed out showing that the odds of death, if a person is struck by a car at 20 miles per hour, is very, very small, about 5%. Just 20 miles per hour faster, it's 85%, and this is according to two separate studies. So, you know, this is really just a matter of safety. If we can save a life, then I think that this order will have been worth it. So that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The other person is Helen Gomez from 36 Stephen Court, Brooklyn, New York.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Helen Andrews. I'm here tonight with Chris Andrews, my husband and co-founder of our cannabis-infused edibleist company, High End Chocolate. We are hoping to make Hoyoke our home base and came tonight to introduce ourselves. The Cannabis Control Commission of Massachusetts has indicated in their draft regulations that they would like for all applicants to reach out to the communities wherein they're seeking to operate. Though that draft requirement is, though that requirement is still in draft form, when I contacted the City Council Office, they recommended that we come tonight. So we're here to introduce ourselves. We are just hoping that tonight is an opportunity for us to get ahead, meet the local government, meet some members of the community, and really that's it. Our introduction letter is in the agenda, as is my contact information. Thank you for having us. It's a pleasure to be here, and we look forward to hearing from you.
Were you on Shark Tank? No? Okay. Looks familiar.
Thanks for making the trip to introduce yourselves.
Thank you very much. That ends the public comment section. Item number one. Item number one is from the mayor, a letter reappointing the following individuals to serve on the Library Board of Directors. Bellamy Schmidt, 661 West Cherry Street, George Mattie, 7 Hemlock Drive, Jeremy Smith, 485 North Hillside Ave., and Charles Barrows, 48 Maple Street. They'll serve a two-year term, and said term will expire February 2020.
Motion to approve?
Motion is to approve, and it was seconded.
Seconded.
All's in favor.
On discussion?
On motion?
On discussion, Mr. President?
Under discussion.
Yeah, just, I guess this is a point of order, I suppose. Maybe Joe can correct me on this, but Mr. Schmidt is already a fire commissioner. Now he's a library commissioner. He's going to be, we got a motion tonight for a financial transfer, so Mr. Schmidt will be pinching for somebody in the Otter's Department for a period of time. At what, I guess my point is, how many, in your estimation, or in your experience, Mr. President, or anybody's experience, how many commissions is one allowed to serve in the city? As many as you want? Is that, or is there no rule?
Sorry, is this a reappointment, or is this new? Because if it's new, let's send it to public.
This one's a reappointment for the Library Board.
But now he's a fire commissioner, and that's not subject to our approval, to the Chair. That's not subject to our approval, as you know.
Question to the committee?
As you know, well, no, I just want to know, I mean, I think Bellamy does a great job, and I have no intention to slow it up. I just, you know, his name keeps popping up, and so I'm just wondering, if you know the answer, if you don't, Mr. President, I don't mean to put you on the spot.
Well, no, it all depends on the position and the job. In essence, if he's going to be working, example, as he was the acting auditor, he couldn't be on the board for the retirement board, because they'd be having their meetings the same time that.
But isn't he on the retirement board?
He is, he is now, yes.
Okay.
I'm just showing an example.
Okay, so he's on the retirement board, he's a fire commissioner, and now he's a library commissioner. I mean, and I express my gratitude for his willingness to serve. Retirement, are they compensated?
Yes.
What, to the Chair?
It's either $1,000 or $4,000 a year.
Okay, so there's three boards he's on, and he'll be, he'll be serving as a paid employee, on a temporary paid employee, and back in the Otter's Office.
Yeah, I mean, if we want, you can file an order as a late file with regards to the number of positions you can serve, depending on the position. I think that's the key, is depending on the position and the board being appointed to.
Well, again, we're just under discussion, so I don't feel bad about this, but I said it before, I said in open meetings before, that there, Mr. President, I'm directing to you, that there are opportunities for the mayor, and I filed an order with Counselor Jordan two years ago, the opportunities for the mayor to appoint persons in Wars 1 and 2. I said, I was at a forum with Counselor Roman, whenever that was announced, I remember, but we were at something last fall, the same thing. It's just over and again. You want to, you want to have a diverse city, you've got to, you've got to, you've got to recognize we have a diverse city. And you appoint the same guy to three different boards, and now he's, and now he's going to, for one of which he gets a paycheck, and now he's going to get another paycheck. And again, there's no reflection on Bellamy as a person, just, it just happens to come up that he's, that he's the guy. So it's more of a reflection on the mayor. I mean, I'm just asking, is there nobody in Wars 1 and 2 that can, there's nobody from Wars 1 and 2 that can serve on these boards, a library commissioner? I'm just, I'm curious. Thank you. Sorry to waste your time.
No? Anyone else? So the motion was to approve the two-year term, so the members listed, and that was seconded. All's in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed? They have been confirmed till February 2020.
Interesting.
Item number two, from Brenna Murphy McGee, City Clerk, communication on explanation of the budget requests. I do believe everyone received this.
Senator Finance?
Second.
Motion is to receive and refer to Finance. All's in favor?
Mr. President?
Yep.
Finance for informational purposes only, or for some type of study?
It's only a communication.
I understand.
So it'd just be for informational purposes.
Thank you.
All's in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? To Finance. Item number three, from Damian Cody, Building Commissioner, overview and impact report, five-year update. Everyone receive the copy?
Received.
Motion is to receive. Do you want to send it to a committee, or for review, or discussion?
You can, you can send a DGR for copy, for informational purposes. We may take it up.
All right, motion to receive and refer to DGNR. All's in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item number four, from Alicia Zoller, Administration Office, Community Development, the Block rant.
DGR, please.
Motion to send it to DGNR. All's in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Number five is from Dave Conti, the manager of the Hoyoke Water Works, which is the agreement between the Tri-CD Carbon Project. Do you believe everyone, I copy this, it's three pages. Make a motion to send it to Finance?
Second.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Number six is the Parking Rec Commission Minutes.
Received.
Motion is to receive. All's in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And number seven is from Ms. Andrews, I saw Ms. Gomez, but the lady who was just speaking at the public comment. It's her communication to the City Council with regards to High Chocolate, High End Chocolate.
Ordinance?
Make a motion to send to ordinance?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Petitions. Item number eight is a petition from Kendrick Williams. It's a renewal for home occupancy at 97 Locust Street.
Motion to approve?
Received and grant the renewal.
Let me just make sure on taxes. All the taxes are current, so the motion is to grant the renewal. Does that have the motion? And seconded? Correct? All's in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? President's Report. One, Counselor Vacan and Counselor Valentin will not be here. Counselor Vacan is on vacation, coming back actually. She reached out to me. And Counselor Valentin is feeling under the weather, took a day off from work and just couldn't make it tonight, so both will be missing. With regards to desks, I know one desk was changed out, all set.
Yep.
Counselor Valentin wants hers, she doesn't like the front falling off. That's the desk that falls off. So we'll change hers out, which then is, we have two beat-up, broken desks, which we said we'd reshift the whole council, then, you know, being the numbers guy, I realized one problem. If you take those two out over there, someone over here has to move over to shift out. So the question being is, on this side of the room, would someone like to move over, by Counselor Leahy?
Can we vote for it?
Flip the coin.
Survivor?
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, Shark Tank.
So what we'll do is, with that, we'll have Counselor Roman move over towards Jimmy, and then we'll reshift it, so that way everyone fits in, you have a Memorial Ballroom, and everyone have a semi-new desk. Also.
Over Red Rover, where Counselor Leahy come over?
Also, I did attend a meeting at the Hoyoke Taxpayers Association with regards to certain things that they're looking for, and it was a very good meeting. In that meeting, they did ask if it would be something we would like to consider, which would be is touring businesses. So if a business owner invites us, I'll send out a communication. Gary Rome, being one of the classic ones, he had at the Hoyoke Chamber of Commerce, which is another thing we attended, a majority of us. He gave a tour of his facility, as well as car washes. What they're trying to do is have business owners come before us and say, "Here's what we're doing in the community, here's how our business works," and give a tour of their facilities, and ask any type of question. I know we all have very busy schedules, but we'll open up to you, whatever date they give us, if you can make it, they understand. If you can't, it'll be ongoing, so it'll be several businesses trying to come before us.
Todd, can I make a suggestion? I filed this maybe two or three years ago. I think it behooves the whole City Council to go up and see exactly what ISO is about. I think that'd be a very interesting field trip for all of us.
Okay, any other?
I think that's a big one. I mean, you're in charge of the whole electrical grid.
Yep. So we can do those. If there's any other ones that you would like, we can always reach out to them, but they're very anxious to have us come up and get to know, know everyone even closer, so. Also, as I mentioned, the Hoyoke Chamber of Commerce, we went in for the legislative night. Congressman Neal was there speaking. Gary Rome, once again, opened up his facility in order to highlight what we can do in Hoyoke, so that was a great time up there. Let's see, the desk, that, and finally, for the report, yes, Baby Mac is in town. Brenna is doing very well. Baby is home, so I thank everyone for reaching out to me and Brenna with texts, emails, warm wishes. The mayor sent flowers today, that was very nice, and I thank the mayor as well. Thank you, everyone. My daughter is home, and Brenna's home, and everyone is doing great, so thank you. Counselor Lisi?
I just have a quick question. I noticed that our Assistant City Clerk and also the Chris Urchel, the legal department, are wearing red pins, and I didn't know what for, if that's something that the city is supporting, or... For heart disease? Okay, I think so.
All right. Now, anyone have anything to report? It's not just the President's Report, is, anything, have anything to share, anything else? No? All right, so with that, we will move on to reports of committees. First up is the Ordnance Committee. Item 9A.
Mr. President, can we take 9A and B as a package, plan the rules?
Motion to suspend the rules, take up 9A and B as a package. All's in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 9A is ordinance who refer to order that the handicap parking sign near 970 Hamden Street be moved back away from the driveway. 9B is that the ordinance, City Council establish a 15-minute parking, only parking space in front of Easy Pick Convenience Store at 224 Lyman Street.
So a motion to pass the first reading?
Second.
Motion is passed the first reading. Counselor Bartley?
Pretty self-explanatory, so moving handicap sign, and then putting up a 15-minute parking only sign in front of a convenience store.
And seeing how 970 was mine, I thank the committee for taking this up. It was a safety hazard, so I do appreciate their action on this. With that, if there's no further questions, all's in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed?
Pass a second reading?
Motion is passed the second reading, it was seconded, all's in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Don't it ever be ordained?
Motion is that the passage be ordained, it was seconded. The clerk will call the roll. If you're in favor of 9A and B, you'll vote yes. If not, you'll vote no.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Unanimous.
With your vote, you have passed 9A and B. 9C, or unless, Counsel, do you have any more packaging, or?
No, I might have missed one here, sorry.
All right. So 9C, this is a, the ordinance that a no parking sign across the street from the driveway at 25 Arthur Street, request that the property, by the property owner, and it is considered and recommended that be adopted.
Yeah, okay, a motion to pass the first reading.
Second.
Motion is passed the first reading, all's in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Counselor Bartley?
Self-explanatory.
Public reports. All right, with that, motion is passed second reading?
Yeah, motion passed second reading.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to order Bureau Motion to order be ordained?
Second.
Motion that the passes be ordained. With that, the clerk will call the roll. Voting yes, you're voting for it. If not, you're voting no.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Unanimous.
With your vote, you approve the no parking sign.
Mr. President, can we take up 9D and 9G as a package?
Second.
Motion is to take, suspended rules, take up 9D and 9G as a package? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 9D is that the committee of ordinance who referred to an order that the DPW gives Robert Fields a street number. And 9G is that the city install a crosswalk from BS Church to the parking lot across North Hampton Street, near Constituent Quest.
Yeah, the motions that these have been complied with?
Second.
Second.
So motion is that, any discussion on these, or self-explanatory?
Yeah, I'm gonna give discussion.
Alright, so, motion is that they have been complied with, with that. Counselor Bartley?
Okay, so 9, and there was a typo in 9D. I think I wrote my notes wrong, so that was my fault. I should have said complied with, sort of adopted. So that's why there's some confusion, I apologize for that. The, yeah, 9D, yeah, what happened was Counselor, Counselor Leahy had, had found out that there was a big delay in a, in a ambulance service, and so he filed this order to, to see if we could get Robert's Field have it, you know, give it a street number, to try to make it a little more obvious to, to the ambulance company. We, we had Mike McManus come in, and Mike advised us that, you know, for various reasons, and he kind of gave a, a written synopsis, that that was something that, that he could work on, and he believes he can assign 86 Resnick Boulevard to that whole area, which is, you know, the John Gilligan Field. But he, he also noted that there are, oh gosh, there are the John Gilligan Field, the Bill and Eileen Track, Eileen Kane Track, McKenzie Stadium, Jemathas, Baseball Diamond, et cetera, et cetera. So there's a lot of different fields in that one complex, and to, to break it all down into, into various street numbers was gonna be a little bit daunting. So he, he thought he could, he could get an address for 86, and, and then furthermore, to, to get that into the hands of the New Ambulance Company, and help them, you know, get there on time. The other one was an order that I filed, which was a constituent request to, to get a crosswalk across North Hampton in front of Blessed Sacrament Church. And I can understand the, the reasons why DPW didn't want to do that this time, but they, it committed to, to improving the existing crosswalks, which, which hopefully will be kind of a fair compromise. And with that, I'll turn it over to anybody else.
Counselor Leahy?
Yeah, thank you. So as everybody knows, we have a new ambulance company in the city. And it was a particular night during the summer at Robert's Field, which is actually Gilligan's Field at the Robert, the complex there. A child was playing field hockey, and he got injured. The call went in downtown, and he got shot up to action ambulance. Action ambulance, which had an ambulance up at the old fire station right across from Elwin Towers. They sprung into action, and the way they overheard it, or the way they heard it, I should say, was that it was a hockey player. So immediately, they went down to Fitzpatrick Hockey Rink. So I guess they didn't hear the field hockey part of it. But it was over 20 minutes, this child was on the, on the, the field crying, you know, just in agony. We can't have that. Since then, my next-door neighbor suffered a broken hip, November 19th, to be exactly. I called 911, action ambulance, immediately got called, and they drove by us. I was standing right on the road with my children, and they zoomed by us because the GPS, the address was down at the end, which is, which is a shame. And so it took about an additional 10 minutes to figure out where we were. You know, action ambulance might be doing a good job, but I don't know that, because judging from these times, and from what I'm hearing, it's not a good thing. However, when they did come onto the scene, at least for our case, they were very nice, very professional, and they did an excellent job. However, I'm filing this order, and I'm glad they got adopted, to put an address at this field, because it is so necessary with the amount of people that utilize these fields. Thank you.
Anyone else? So for 9D, Counselor Bartley, it's recommended that be complied with?
Yes.
So friendly amendment to fix that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And then 9G is that, is correctly typed up? So the motion is that the order has been complied with? No more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Mr. President, can we take 9E and 9F as a package? Because they really pertain to the same property.
The motion is to suspend rules, take up 9E and F as a package. It was seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 9E is for a special permit at 226 Sergeant Street, and 9F is 230 Sergeant Street. Also a special permit for the two different LLCs.
So the, the motion is to approve the special permit for both with conditions?
Second.
The motion is to approve what conditions? Are the conditions part of the package?
They ought to be.
They should be.
Let's make sure.
If not, I, I have, I have my notes, Mr. President, so.
I'm just looking through, just, I-
Should be parking in hours, right?
Lighting.
Can you just give them to me, so I can write them on the report?
Yeah, I've, I've got my notes, but the other committee members are here, so if I miss anything, they'll, they'll, they'll fill in the gap. So for 226 Sergeant Street, the conditions were for hours to be as follows. Monday through Friday, 10 to 6. And Saturday and Sunday, 9 to 5. For 230 Sergeant Street, the, the hours are, let's see, Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday, Saturday, 9 to 5.
So Tuesday, Wednesday?
Friday, Saturday.
9 to 5, okay.
And Thursday, 10 to 7.
Did you say, Counselor Lisi, did you say lighting? I heard lighting, or it was?
So we asked, let me see here, 226 Sergeant Street, to provide lighting on the exterior side of the building?
Okay. Anything on 230? Parking, anything?
We limited, we didn't, we didn't create parking restrictions, but we also, we limited 230 Sergeant Street to four chairs. Counselor Bartley, do you have anything else?
Oh, no.
Alright, so with that, 226, the conditions are hours, Monday to Friday, 10 a.m. to 6 p.m. Saturday, Sunday, 9 to 5. Lighting on the side of the building. For 230, the conditions are hours are Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday, Saturday, 9 to 5. Thursday, 10 to 7. Will limit to four chairs.
Yeah, and then just on the business itself, Mr. President, we were very happy to, I thought everybody, everybody really pitched in on this. We thought the applicants were really impressive. We're, we're kind of glad to see some business activity, commercial activity in, in that building. Also very impressed with the property owner. This is not the first time he's been before us. He was looking two years ago to, to get a zone change. There was a lot of pushback from the neighborhood, and so that, that zone change never came, ultimately fizzled before it came to us for a vote. It was withdrawn, and this particular applicant has really taken some, some forward steps to try to reach out to the neighborhood. So I think, I think it's gonna be, well, we're hopeful it's gonna be a good fit. It's, the issue there is, like any business, you know, parking, parking noise, lights and traffic. I mean, that's pretty much it. We're, we're hopeful, though, that, they seem like they're very conscientious individuals, and I think to a person on the committee, we were, we were happy to support them. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Lisi, and then Counselor McGivern?
Thank you. So in case anyone's wondering, I'll just give a, a little bit of background on the, the building and the, the projects themselves. So as Counselor Bartley mentioned, this property was before us last year, requesting a zone change. And then, when we understood the layout of the property some more, it seemed that a way forward that would have less impact on the neighborhood is actually to go through this past of request, path of requesting a non-conforming use special permit, because the zone change would allow so many different types of uses moving forward. And what we really wanted to create is a mixed-use business environment there. They have four residential units upstairs, and the downstairs has two business units, but the business units have not been occupied for several years now. And we felt that both these businesses, they presented themselves in a really professional manner, as Counsel, Counselor Bartley mentioned, but they also seemed to have a, a very light impact on the neighborhood. They did meet with the residents. Hobby Quest is, is, is STEM programming. So they do work with the public schools currently, and now they're looking to create some after-school programming and birthday parties that are based on STEM programming related to aviation, fashion, and a number of other hobby areas. And then, the other side of the building would have The Parlor Faded Co., which is a barber shop, but it would be by appointment only. So we, again, we felt that the impact, the traffic impact on the neighborhood would be fairly low. It's something that I think the Ward 6 Counselor is going to need to monitor. If the, if the residents find that there's particular areas that get congested, we can always file some orders that limit parking in some way. But it does seem that both these, both these businesses are fairly low impact at this point in time. And we limited the chairs in the barber shop to four. So I think that we, we set up a good situation for these projects to move forward, bring business into the area, and make sure that the residents' concerns are being met at the same time.
Counselor McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President. The, I think the committee did their due diligence, and with the help of the Law Department, we've stretched what is, by my understanding, what nonconformity has always been about. But the important thing is, is we, the city's between a rock and a hard place, as is the landlord on this one. This is a residential property, which, nonconforming being that before zoning, part of the residential property was used commercially. And oftentimes, there's hundreds of these properties across the city. The commercial is used and continue to use, and is grandfathered in. It's when it switches hands that it has to have a special permit to agree to, agree to one most important thing, and Counselor Lisi and Counselor Bartley both said it, is the special permit is going to something that is equal or less detrimental to the neighborhood. The committee did their diligence by reaching out to the neighborhood, and I think what the committee is saying, and what they're asking the full City Council to, to, is to agree that it is less detrimental with these conditions added to the special permits. We can't touch parking on this, unlike other special permits. This is still subject to the parking ordinances of the city, and the Building Commissioner has to determine if they, how the landlord sets up the parking, because it is, again, residential property and commercial property together. I think the big thing is, no neighbors complained. I don't understand, because I thought you could not do this after two years, but we were told that we could, even though it's been vacant, the commercial part has been vacant for seven years. But between the rock and the hard place is, the type of zoning, the residential part is already maxed out. So these could not even be converted into residential units without a zone change itself. So a lot of departments said we can do it. Building Commissioner asked us to do it. I think it's a good idea for the neighborhood, and I think we should go forward with it.
Anyone else? I'll say one thing, as, I grew up on, in this area, so I've been by this property, and it's, over the years, it's been vacant for a very long time. And the amount of work that I've seen the building go through now, it, it's night and day, so thank the committee for the work on this one. And actually, the building does look very good compared to prior years. So with that, if there's no further discussion, this one, roll, uh, roll call, correct?
Roll call.
Clerk will call the roll. If you're voting yes, you're approving both special permits. No, you're voting against it.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Unanimous.
With your vote, you approve 9E and F, the two special permits. Now on to Finance Committee. 10A?
We still got 9G.
What, did we miss one? No, we didn't.
Did I miss your final one?
Did we miss, I thought we took it up as a package?
Package.
Then we, D and G?
Yeah, we did that. D and G.
You guys voted? No, just kidding. Alright, so 10A. This is a order with, with regards to Mastering Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, that the City Council hereby accept the provisions of the fiscal year 2018 traffic grant.
Motion to receive and adopt the committee report.
Second.
First reading?
Motion to receive and pass first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? With that, Counselor McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee did meet on the, this and two other grants. They, they are grants that have been accepted in the past. This particular grant is worth a total of $12,000, but currently, only 1,750 have been allocated through the state. What this grant is used for is, is a number of different, and there's no matching funds by the city. A number of different things, click it or ticket programs that the, the, the Police Department will run throughout the year in terms of helping out with traffic control, traffic enforcement itself. They, they do use this, and, and are intending to, if they have not already looked at, look to buy a new meter counter. That's something that we use for traffic studies in a number of different areas, and those things get more, more than well-used. The committee recommends that we accept the provisions of the grant and allow the appropriate fund itself to be set up, to be used and administered by both the Department Head and the Treasurer.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is there a motion to pass the second? Counselor Leahy will abstain. And with that, is there a motion to pass the second reading?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Pass second reading. Clerk will call the roll. If you're in favor, you're accepting the grant. If not, you're voting against it.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Ten.
With your vote, you've accepted the fiscal 2018 traffic grant.
President McAmos, we suspend rules to take ten B and ten C together.
Second.
Motion to suspend rule, take items B and C together. Alls in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Ten B is the State 911 Department Support Initiative Grant. Ten C is the State 911 Department Training and EMD Regulatory Compliance Grant. Motion was to receive as a package that was approved. Motion is now to...
Thank you. Motion is to receive and adopt both grants. Pass the first reading.
Motion to receive and adopt. Pass the first reading. Under discussion?
Thank you, Mr. President. Similar grants, we can separate if anybody wishes to vote against one of them. Both well-needed funds though within the city. And I think we'll agree with the committee report once we get a couple of things out in the open. The 911 is the much broader grant. That's the first one, ten, ten B. Hundred and fifty thousand four hundred dollars currently is allocated towards the city's use. This can be used in a variety of areas. If you picture the dispatch room at the police department, there's need for a new heater ventilation. There's need for a number of different things of refurbishing and redoing that room itself and furniture, which I will address in a second. This can also be used, this part of the grant, this particular grant can also be used for salaries. A lot of questions were asked about that. I myself wanted to make sure we weren't using this grant to augment a full salary for a dispatcher, but only for emergencies and necessary overtime if someone is, needs to be filled in for and there are no other funds available at the moment. The representative of the chief was Sergeant John Hart. He said that that is the way the chief would, is always looked out at these particular grants. This grant is also in line to look for some new software that is needed. And this grant is also used for training of the dispatchers. Existing dispatchers need to go on. I'm, I'm jumping into the next grant on training. Excuse me a minute.
No, no problem.
But the, what, on this first grant, the 9111, the, the committee did ask for, I think it was Counselor McGee, but we all agreed, a listing of the equipment that's been purchased and at the point where, you know, any equipment that they intend to purchase. The chief did email it. I apologize, my printer is not working at home. I know Ryan's been copied and, and the Counselor President has been copied also. But there's well over $12,000 of equipment that ranges from the, the chairs, the special-type chairs that dispatchers need, a number of different heavy-duty foot switches, labor, all kinds of things that are used in the dispatch room itself. The chief did respond to us in a, in a very quick fashion, I think as he always does. The second grant is less money and it's a little bit more specific. It's, it's a training for the dispatchers. Ongoing training is at least 16 hours a year for all of our dispatchers. And anytime we hire someone new, they go through a much more elaborate and intense training to get them up to speed. This particular grant, the EMD grant, is at $25,426. And I, I think we understand that between training and especially what, if you get a couple of new dispatchers during the year, that can be used very quickly. Our recommendation is that both grants be received and allow the appropriate department head and treasurer to, an auditor, I'm sorry, to, to expend the grants through a special fund.
Any questions? Since Chairman brought up, I did receive that email, just so we have it. Twelve thousand two hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ninety cents for, let's see here, twelve thousand two thirty-nine was for power phones. And then for Conklin Office Furniture, five thousand nine hundred and eighteen. Marcus Communications, four thousand one hundred and ninety-three fifty-four. Grant total of all those expenses for equipment and chairs and furniture, twenty-two thousand three hundred and fifty-one dollars and forty-four cents out of the... One fifty-four hundred. One hundred and fifty thousand four hundred. Those are your numbers.
Question?
Counselor Sullivan?
Question. So, out of the hundred fifty thousand, twenty-two thousand accounted for, where does the other hundred twenty-eight thousand go?
It can go to any of those things that I cited, which is the, that, that room is very old, if you haven't been over there lately. Needs a new heater ventilation system. It needs a number of different things in terms of what's going on in the wall. The chief did not have the price yet on the new software, which is expensive. And again, it can be used for salaries if needed down the road.
As I understand, it could also be used for overtime?
Which was, I would suggest that's the way it should be used, but yes. Now, instead of, you hire a new person out of a grant, it, it causes a problem immediately to our budget process. But more important, it can cause a problem down the road of we now hire a new body that is not part of the, of the existing ordinance or the existing budget itself. The grant dries up eventually. The city owns that body, which means either unemployment insurance, that they cannot find the money to pay for the salary that a grant has been paying for. And if you don't prepare for that, some cities like Springfield have had big problems. Literally Springfield, you know, went under the Finance Control Board because they, they hired hundreds of cops under a grant. And five years later, all, five years later, all the grant money dried up. And they didn't know what to do. They couldn't find the money to pay for the police officers. If they laid them off, it cost even more. So I, I suggest, nine out of 10 times, you don't use a grant to create a new position.
Okay, I'm sorry, but I'm still a little lost on, on, on one aspect of it. It is, it appeared to me that night that quite a bit of that wasn't for a new position, but was for overtime in that position. And the question in my mind was, shouldn't that result in a reduction of the budgeted overtime line items?
It can, Mike, but if you're asking, may I ask, answer the question?
Absolutely.
But we're running out of deficit in that line item. So the overtime is already below what is, what is needed in terms of what is requested and what has traditionally been used. So if, you know, if a grant money comes in and arguments anything, that's a plus to the city. The way to use it is if you use it as overtime, yes, you're making a good point. We gotta know. We gotta know what's, what's being used so we can plan for next year or have a better understanding as we plan for next year when the budget cycle comes through. But to reduce something that's already in a deficit, I don't know how you do that.
Thank you. Anyone else? The motion was to pass the first reading. It was seconded. Alls in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is passed the second reading. Clerk will call the roll. You're voting yes, you're voting to accept both grants. Remember, we package them together. Both grants. If you're voting no, you're voting against both grants.
Lebron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Unanimous.
With your vote, you've approved the acceptance of both grants.
Mr. President, the regular meeting of the Finance Committee, which is on the off Monday, will be this Monday, the 12th. There, as we can see later in the agenda, there's already two items we received. There's three, several items coming in for the committee's review.
Thank you very much.
So if, if I could, through, so if the 12th is finance, could we have a public service meeting, Ryan, the 26th? Because the 19th is President's Day.
No, you can't. Twenty-sixth, twenty-sixth, it can't, Ryan.
DGR.
We used to have the big red book. That vanished. We'll work on that one. So with that, we'll move on to public safety. There are no reports, public service, no reports. On to DGNR.
Mr. President, could you just go out of order real fast to thirteen C? That, that, we tabled that committee. So I just want to just, just table that and send it back to...
Okay, so the motion is to take up item 13, go out of order. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Alls opposed?
Just a motion to table, refer back to committee.
Motion for item 13C is to send it back to committee. It was seconded. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Alls opposed? Back to committee.
And motion to take up 13 A and B as a package?
Motion is to take up 13 A and B as a package, suspend the rules. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Alls opposed? Item 13 is the committee, DGNR as I'll call it, so it was referred that Mayor Mike Knappick, Director of Government, Baker's Western Massachusetts, appear before the DGNR Committee. Knappick to attend with Senator Hahnspen and Representative Vega. Recommended that the order has been complied with. Thirteen B is that DGNR, who was referred, invite Don Homison, Counsel, Aaron Vega, Representative Vega, sorry, to a meeting of GR Committee in order to help city council comply with Rule 32. Recommend that that has been adopted as well. With that, I turn it over to Counselor...
Motion to approve the committee report?
Motion to approve it. That was seconded. Counselor, are there any discussion?
Yeah, it was just a really great discussion. Once again, so thank you to Aaron and Don and Mike. I didn't realize that Mike had, geez, I'm glad I got him in when he did because I think he's taken a new job in the public, public sector. So I'm glad, I'm glad he came in when he did. But he really, I'm sure he'll, I'm sure the governor will find a suitable replacement. All of those are big shoes to fill, for sure. And then we'll, we'll do it again. Because I thought that made the meeting that, that much more informative to have somebody from the governor's office as well as the, the state delegation. So Don and, and Aaron were on point with, with, you know, the whole range of subjects that they, they discussed. And it was just an informative meeting. I, I know there is, there are a lot of counselors there. So I, instead of just kind of reiterating, it was, you know, an hour and a half meeting. So I'm not gonna really, I'm not gonna do justice by summarizing it. But, but it was, it was helpful to me to, to know that there... Well, one thing I will, I should point out is, is it's amazing how this state budget continues to grow. So somehow, somehow a $41 billion budget is never enough and it's gonna grow by, by three and a half percent. That's, that's, that's the part I, I, I wanna, wanna take away from, from that. But, but we, we discussed a whole series of issues. As, as you're aware, where there's a possibility, we, we could have one, maybe two new schools in Holyoke. We, we talked about transportation issues and, and opioid, opioid issues, cannabis regulations. So, you know, with that, I'll sort of turn it over to anybody else who's there and wants to talk about something more specific. But, but thank you to the delegation to Mike Knappick.
Anyone else? Counselor Tomlin?
Yeah, I just want to thank our chairman for having them in again. It was very informative. We really, I mean, we, we see our, our representatives out and about at different events, but to have them here and, and to directly ask them questions about what's going on with the state and, and how they can help our community to, to build, to, to grow, whether it's jobs or education or try new traffic exits. It's really important to get that dialogue with them. And, and having Mike Knappick here was really a bonus to give, get information from the governor's office and, and so many different issues that affect us as a community. And, and knowing that they all are really working hard to try to make this community better and, and to try to bring in the funding that it needs. As Aaron stated, some of the, some of the small grants that we get to help some of the smaller agencies in, in our community, nonprofits that really, you know, help the, the people that really need it. So it was really a, a good night. And I, I really thank the, the chairman for bringing them in again.
Counselor Leahy?
Yeah, thank you, President McGee. Back in 1999, I'm sorry, back in 1992, graduating from Hoyoke High School, I got, I received most talkative. I also got most friendly, but most talkative to this, what matters here. And boy, you know, I'm, I'm good friends with Aaron, Don and Mike, but boy, can they talk. So, you know, the limited amount of time that we had, you ask them a question and, and boy, do they go with it. I mean, they, they took as much time as they could. But I encourage all of my fellow city counselors, when we have three people of that statute in one room, it should be a sellout. Every counselor should be at this meeting. And I encourage other counselors in, in the future to not miss a meeting when you have, you know, a state rep, a state senator, and somebody of Mike Knappick's caliber. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Bartley, did they touch on, I know I emailed you and thank you for reaching out to Mass DOT. Did they comment on 141 at all, or?
We asked a question, Mr. President. And just to your main, main question, I, I reached out to Mass DOT a couple of times and I have had the pleasure of reply. And they've been gracious enough to come before us twice. I think in 2013 and 2015, if I remember right. But, you know, Joe could probably correct me on that. But they certainly been before us twice. And really informative because there's so many projects that Mass DOT has that affects Hoyoke. I mean, Route 91 being the obvious one, but the, the horror condition of 391, it's atrocious. And, and now with the changes coming along to Exit 17 interchange, that, that's gonna be fairly significant. And I know you had some, some requests in, in Ward Seven as to how this is gonna impact them. And, and what Aaron talked about was the, the, the canal bridge on Lyman Street. I mean, that's probably gonna be shut down. That little tiny bridge, that little nothing hundred-foot bridge, which is flat as a pancake, not even arched to it, it's gonna shut down for a year. I mean, so now we're, we're talking about detouring traffic through, I mean, how are they even gonna do that? I don't know. And how's that gonna affect the, the businesses over there? I mean, it's gonna be fairly significant. So I, I think we, we have some really pointed questions to Mass DOT. The Exit 17 interchange was only briefly discussed because the, the state delegation really doesn't have the firm, firm answers. And, and really the questions, I think the constituents want to know are timing. And, and Aaron kind of seen more form than, than the other two, but I mess, this is mainly his district. So he did not give us a specifics, other than he mentioned 2020 was, was, it was gonna start. But that didn't sound real firm either. So that's about as good as I can do right now, Mr. President.
No, no, I, I thank you for that. For those who don't know, 141, they're trying to redo the interchanges. Actually put in, I think it was like four-lane highways up on 141 going up and over the mountain, which is kind of interesting. And no lights in certain areas, old Jarvis and stuff. So kind of a headache going on, but then there was no, there was one notice in the paper. And if they wanna call it a public hearing, that's what they tried to do. So constituents want a voice and they want to be heard on what to do with that whole area. So that's what we're waiting to see. So thank you, Counselor Bartley.
I just, I just have a question and I'm sorry that I wasn't here. But did they bring anything up about the 391? There's a lot of complaints about the lights. I know that this is DOT, but did anybody bring a conversation on that one? Because we've had news, 391 coming in to Hoyoke. The lights been out for some time. Did they bring that to the...
What, what light led us?
The day that you had the meeting with the...
No, no, what, what light on 391? I'm sorry.
All the, all the, the, the lights.
The, the street lamps?
The, the street lamps, yeah.
No, no, I wasn't, I wasn't aware of that.
Because I know that it's been on the news and all of that. So I was just wondering.
Counselor Leahy for you.
Good through the chair to, to address Counselor Glass, Lebron Martinez. We've had a couple of meetings and Mike McManus has come in and with the alarm division. Those lights are so old, and Todd, you've been part of these meetings as well, that they were actually going on eBay and buying parts. No longer can they find any parts on eBay. And this is going to be kind of a grandiose plan to start bonding for the fixing of these lights. Because as you said, they've been out or flashing or blinking and it's been kind of a safety issue for, for everyone. We have very old street lights and they need to be replaced.
The, I'm sorry, the ones that I'm referring is actually the highway as we're coming into it.
Are you talking of the traffic lights or the lights themselves?
The lights, the, the, the big...
The street lamps.
Not the, not those, not, not our lights in the city. It's when you're getting off at 391, you're still on the highway. There's been darkness and there's a coverage being done lately with Channel 22 about that situation. I just thought it was brought up, but I guess not. That's okay.
It wasn't.
It's a DOT issue. It's not actually city, local owned. So, thank you.
Well, if, if, so you know, and if, when they do get back to Counselor Bartley with regards to 141, if they do come back to us, we'll definitely bring that up to try and get the answers to as well.
Thank you.
So if there's no discussion, for 13 A and B, the order was that it was complied with, it was seconded. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Alls opposed? Counselor...
Oh, I'd like to suspend the rules and take three orders out of my jacket if the body would allow me.
So I'll read the motion is to suspend rules to take from public safety, the following. The Committee on Public Safety, whom it was referred, in order that the fire chief request the ISO to provide in writing whether or not the closing of Engine Two will impact the ISO rating. The other one is Committee of Public Safety, that the Chief of Police, Hoyoke Police Department, provide detailed breakdown of Operation Full Throttle. In what streets, neighborhood did these 400 arrests occur? Information could be provided back to City Council in 30 days. And then the last one is that signs be placed at key gateway and traffic island. Signs will read, please help our community, do not give money to panhandlers. These are the three items that are being requested to come out of committee to suspend the rules and pull from committee. These three items were on the agenda for November 21st, 2017, but did not have the required signatures. So they were referred back to committee.
If I may, Mr. President.
Under discussion?
Real, real brief, I mean, two of the orders, one is just a yes from the fire chief, the second one is a police report, the third one is, may, some people may think a little controversial, so I don't know if we can take them one by one, or if they have to be a package. But like I said, you know, the fire chief said yes, the police chief sent up the report. I don't know why it wasn't, why, why I didn't get three signatures the night of the committee meeting, but I didn't, and like I said, two of them have no controversy about them at all. I know that-
Would you like to take them up one at a time?
I would prefer.
Okay, so, motion is to suspend the rules, take up Agenda Item 22C, which is that the Committee of Public Safety was referred, that the fire chief requests an ISO approved in writing that the closing of Engine 2 will not impact the ISO rating. So the motion is to suspend the rules and take that from committee. Is there a second?
Second.
It was seconded. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Alls opposed? With that, Counselor Breslinen?
Sure, thank you, Mr. President. Very briefly, engine went offline. The ISO is the insurance service offices that rate cities, they do it, I think, every five years. I asked the chief to do it again, it was done in 2016, our rating was great. 2017, we lost Engine 2, which in my opinion could impact the ISO rating. So I asked him if they would, could he simply email the ISO and ask him to come back out? He said yes, he would, it should be done in calendar year 2018.
So the motion is complied with?
Yes, oh, the motion is going to comply with, yes.
Seconded. So the motion is that the orders can be complied with. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Alls opposed? Also under suspension of rules, Agenda Item 22D, being pulled from public safety. The committee provided a detailed breakdown of Operation Full Throttle. In what streets, neighborhoods did these 400 arrests occur? And information be provided to City Council. And that is, it was recommended that be complied with at that point in time, and that was from Counselor Roman and Bartley. So here, make a motion and pull it from committee?
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Alls opposed? Counselor Breslinen?
Sure. This report was from September 19th, and it was an order filed by Counselor Bartley and Counselor Roman. I'm going to let Counselor Sullivan speak to that, though. Thank you.
Yeah, so we got a great response from the chief, was quite a project at the time. There was a large number of arrests, he gave us a breakdown of them. I don't have the exact number here, it's in the hundreds. Four hundred arrests, all right? The, the interesting thing in reading through the arrests is the vast majority of these, and this is something I thought would be very interesting, not only to the council, but for the public in general. When you go down the lists of the arrests being made, it's really interesting. Springfield, Chicagabe, 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 Springfield, Springfield, Chicagabe, Chicagabe. I'd say easily three-quarters, maybe 80% of the people being arrested here in Hoyoke are not Hoyoke citizens. And the city gets a horrible rap, I think, for the crime rate and stuff like that. But to see this report, to see, you know, where these, where the people that are being caught here in Hoyoke are not residents, I found that very heartening and very interesting also, is where this crime is coming from. And it's not coming from the vast majority, it's not coming from the good residents of this city. It's an imported product. The other thing, going down the list, and interesting to note that of the people arrested that weren't from the city, 18 are listed as homeless, 15 of them separate people, and one person three times, the same person. So during the, during the course of this, 22,000 bags of heroin were seized, 555 bags of crack cocaine, 10 illegal firearms. One of the illegal firearms was on a homeless person. 95 of the arrest warrants, 95 of the arrest warrants served, 20 of them were felony warrants, two of them were fugitive from justice. And during this operation on June 13th, there was an armed robbery at the Family Market on 81 North Bridge Street, where the suspect discharged his weapon in the store, the suspect fled on foot, tossed the weapon, and thanks to the great work of the patrol officer working that day, along with added detectives that were working this operation, they were able to flood the area, and the officers got into a foot chase with the suspect and took him into custody. The weapon involved was missing, they brought in the K-9 team, and were able to recover their sawed-off shotgun. So, there you have it.
Anyone else? Counselor McGivern?
I could, through the chair, just ask Counselor Sullivan, what dates that report reflected?
Pardon?
What, were the dates?
Full throttle, I want to say it was May 31st through June 29th.
Thank you. If I could, Mr. President, there were some good arrests that were made through that period. Counselor Sullivan pointed out probably the Drug Task Force was not just part of full throttle, but the Drug Task Force made a couple of big raids during that exact period. And some of the warrants that were taken off the street, and some of the people that Mike mentioned, were all part of what was known as full throttle. I will remind everyone that, you know, at the end of April, May, we were sitting in this room, you know, looking at the budget for this year, and to finishing of the budget for last year. And I looked point-blank at the chief, and I asked him how much overtime money he'd be returning to the city for free cash, and he said zero. Every overtime dollar was put into full throttle. Some good arrests were made. Look at the arrests in July, August, and September, you'll see a stark difference.
So the motion was seconded, that the order has been complied with. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Alls opposed? Last one, suspend the rules, or that the Public Safety, whose is referred, in order that signs be placed at Key Gateway and Traffic Islands. Sign will read, please help our community, do not give money to panhandlers. This is to pull from the committee, suspend rules, pull from the committee. It was seconded, alls in favor?
Aye.
Alls opposed? Counselor Breslinen?
Again, I'm going to defer to Counselor Sullivan.
So this is one we took up in committee. We've had probably a half a dozen different attempts to address the panhandler situation in town. This was an idea brought to me by a constituent, and during the election campaign back in November, I had a tremendous amount of input from people I talked to. We didn't feel this was anything nearly as controversial, we weren't getting ourselves locked up in anything with the Civil Liberties Union, trampling on freedoms of speech or anything. As a matter of fact, it was just as much a freedom of speech to post a sign like this. The idea itself came from, interestingly enough, signs posted on a Navajo Indian reservation, and it's a problem that the Native Americans have on the reservations, and it's the exact, almost the exact same wording. We changed one word on it from, I think it was just to put the community in instead of our citizens. But it's in response to really doing something that I think has been demanded by the public to at least put some effort to curtail this. It doesn't take away from anybody's ability to make a donation if they want, or give something out, it doesn't cross any other lines. It's a simple statement and a simple concept.
Anyone else? The motion is that the order is complied with, by the way.
So we're not recommending anything?
Just that the, I'll read the full thing again. Committee on Public Safety, whose is referred, in order that the signs be placed at Key Gateway and Traffic Islands. Sign will read, please help our community, do not give money to panhandlers, have considered the same, and recommended that the order has been complied with. It was voted in the committee three, three zero.
So what that means, Mr. President, is after tonight, it's over with, and the work is done, and it goes nowhere.
The committee has taken up the order. That's what it means. Further discussion? So on the, on the order is that it's been complied with, it was seconded, there was a second to it?
Second.
Seconded. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Alls opposed?
No.
I say that is approved. All right. With that, if there's no other committees to pull from, we'll move on to motions, orders, and resolutions. First up is 16, from Counselor Sullivan, that the City of Hoyoke adopt Master on Law, Chapter 39, Section 32D, in order to allow committee members to miss one meeting during the public hearing process. Can I read the whole thing?
Can we do abbreviated readings and just let them go to committee for discussion?
Thank you. Yes, we can, if there's a motion.
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 Motion is to a different, refer to committee. Alls in favor? Alls opposed? All right. So with that, Counselor Sullivan, number 16, where you want Master on Law, Section 20 through D, in order to allow committee members to miss one meeting during the public hearing, what committee? Would you like that to go to?
Ordinance.
Ordinance.
But to make a permission, I'd like to be added.
With adding, Counselor Breslinen? Anyone else? Joe?
Just real quick, I'm going to committee, but I would ask the law department to be able to answer a question as to, and this is a good order, because of what, especially what's going on with the planning board, is this, how far does this reach out? And does this impose any consequences on other boards? I don't believe it touches elected officials, but does it touch any other boards as it's worded, and what consequences could there be?
So a motion to send a ordinance with a copy to legal for, or an opinion to then be provided to ordinance. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Alls opposed? Number 17, from Counselor Sullivan, that order that the DPW Commissioners and Sewer Commissioners meet with the council to discuss merger of Sewer Commissioner and the Sewer Deficit. To what committee?
I don't know if this Charter and Rules, because we're trying to eliminate a group here, or DGNR?
I see what you're saying.
Yeah, I think so, Mike.
I think it'd be Charter and Rules.
Yeah.
The motion is to send a Charter and Rules?
Second.
Alls in favor? Alls opposed? Item number 18, that the Water Commissioners and DGW Heads meet with the council, discuss and update issues regarding Ashley and Whitey Reservoir and tax abatements?
DGNR.
Motion is to send to DGNR. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Alls opposed? Item 19, from Counselor Sullivan, that the Law Department look into joining class action lawsuits against the opioid manufacturers in order to cover financial damages.
Receive, adopt, send to the Law Department?
Motion is to receive and adopt and send to the Law Department?
Copy to the mayor, maybe?
Copy to the mayor? Everyone?
Fine.
That was seconded. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Item number 20, from Counselor Sullivan, whereas the property values of the city have risen at the very modest rate in the tax at the maximum allowed, any increase in property values should reflect a decrease. Therefore, the Hoyoke City Council hereby encourage the mayor to submit a budget that incorporates a reduction in total spending of at least 2.5%. Say finance. Motion is to receive and refer to finance.
Should we, do you want to send it to the mayor, though? So maybe it's a?
No.
No.
Well, I don't think it should be a final vote this evening, that's, you know, you send a copy, it doesn't say, you know, whether it's, majority of city councils are in agreement or not.
Right. So we can take it up in finance?
It deserves review, I think, first, you know.
Correct.
Well, we could take it up tonight.
Well, you can receive, adopt, and send to the mayor, or you could receive and refer to finance?
I'm ready.
What's up to you? What do you guys want? It's your order. How would you like?
I'd like to receive and adopt, I think it's pretty straightforward, I think we should do a full reading on it.
Okay, so I'll read, do a full reading for order of the counselors. Whereas the property values in the city have risen at a very modest rate, and are taxed at the maximum allowed, any increase in property values should reflect a decrease in the tax rate. Whereas level of funding will not work in addressing the city's financial woes, whereas stronger measures must be implemented now in order to avoid financial crisis and lessen the burden on the taxpayer. To be therefore, the City Council hereby encourage the mayor to submit a budget that incorporates a reduction in total spending of at least 2.5%.
So Phil, all we're, all we're doing is putting it out there that we really, really need to cut the budget and not come back with level funding, and, you know, get the word and put it right out in front of the mayor right now, where we stand on this.
So the motion is to receive and adopt, and it would go to the mayor? That's what you're looking for?
Yep.
So that is the motion, is that seconded?
Second.
It is seconded. Under discussion, no one? Counselor McGivern?
I hear what Counselor Sullivan just said, but it doesn't read what Counselor Sullivan just said, and I think we're sending a written confused message, although I agree that, you know, one of the ways to resolve our budget issues is to cut. And I think it's, I've said that before, it's not just the mayor, and it's not just cutting a budget. If you want to reduce the problems that we're facing at budget time, file the order to reduce the number of policemen, number of firefighters, number of DPW workers, the cost per bag to get your trash picked up, and what parks you want to close. That's doing the job. If you want to fight, like I'd like to fight, to find the revenue to keep these services in place, that's the position I'd like to continue to take. Telling the mayor that just carte blanche, that according to a formula that doesn't fit with the formula of Proposition 2 and 1/2, that we just want to see the budget cut by this percentage, but property values are going to constantly fluctuate. It's not the property values that it's our problem, it's the loss of property that's our problem, and the lack of new growth with new property. What we need to be doing is promoting the services that we provide to get new businesses to want to come into Hoyoke, to take advantages of the things that we do have as both a community to live in and a community to do business in. And to keep sending these messages, you know, that we're flat broke, and our budget is nothing but a structural deficit, without fighting for the services that we need, and I think most of the people who live in this city want, and telling the business community that we are a good place to come, because it's a great place to live and a great place to do business, is the wrong message to send.
Counselor Leahy?
Yeah, thank you. And on that note, I understand where Counselor Sullivan's coming from, and I appreciate that. However, the budget, if you guys have it in your desk, it comes down to two things. One, personnel, and basically insurance. We need to find a better way to get better insurance costs for our employees and not keep increasing year after year. That's one of the biggest expenses that we have, and it just, it really kills our budget. And the second thing is personnel. I think that, you know, in some cases, we have not enough personnel in certain departments. We also need to be stronger and fight for charter school reimbursement, or, you know, busing. You know, we spend so much money a year on busing, that could be put towards better use. You know, but the biggest thing that we have going for us right now is the amount of money that we're spending on insurance, and it's just, it's astronomical. Thank you.
Anyone else? So currently, the motion is to receive and adopt, which we refer to the mayor, that was seconded, alls in favor?
Aye.
Alls opposed?
No.
Show of hands.
Motion is to?
Do the eyes have it or not?
I'd say the eyes have failed, so.
Peter Tomlin has a very deep voice, it's real hard to tell how the vote goes sitting next to this guy, I got to tell you, I can never tell.
Since we're in doubt that there's a quest of show of hands, if you're in favor, please raise your hand. If you're against, raise your hand. I told you my ears aren't that bad. I haven't had sleep in about 48 hours, but. Since that, motion failed. Is there another motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to send it to committee.
Motion is to receive and refer to finance. Is there a second?
President, do you need a motion reconsidered first?
Oh, motion is to reconsider, thank you, Joe. Motion is to reconsider our actions on item number 20.
Second.
For a second? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Alls opposed?
No.
No.
When I say that, motion to reconsider passes? No request for show of hands? All right. Under discussion, Counselor Breslin?
I'm sorry about that. I just had a few thoughts and, you know, I, I agree with everyone's sentiment in, in this chambers, but I mean, you know, the fact of the matter is, is that there really isn't any money. There really isn't any new growth. You know, I mean, has there been any out of the box ideas, like maybe picking up trash every other week, maybe closing city halls on certain hours? I mean, there's some departments that are doing that and they're seeing success in that. They're extending their hours earlier and closing early on, and closing early on Fridays. There's many communities that do that. But there hasn't really been any out of the box ideas. We just saw what Dunkin' Donuts went through over on the corner of Hamden Street. I mean, so, you know, it, it's great to talk that, you know, we got to be business friendly and, you know, have, attract businesses, but, you know, we got to remember when these appointments are coming up for certain boards and we see the obstacles that a new permitting process, the gentlemen that are proposing it, that are going through, it's sad. Where folks in other communities can go through a permit process and it's in one night and they're done. It's approved. And on, on they go to the construction phase of life. I mean, it, it's unfortunate. I mean, we still, we're still renting out the building at the school department. I mean, there's not all the floors, but we're still, you know, using money there. I mean, I don't think the mayor was under any obligation to do exactly what Counselor Sullivan was ordering him to do. It's his budget. We just get to cut it and that's, that's what happens. Every year, he puts a budget in and we cut it. I mean, it just, it's, it's kind of a go around, round robin here of, of really not progressing. So, I mean, I think it might have been a, you know, a, just a, a simple reminder that, you know, the financial times are tough. And now when the mayor's in for four years, I mean, many of the people that, you know, are maybe opposed to this, I'm, I'm assuming they were opposed to the CPC when we talk about ta, or the CPA when we talk about tax rates. Now, we all know that the CPA contributions from the state will not be happening this year. So basically, besides the tax rate that the City of Hoyok is dealing with, every homeowner and property owner is paying into the CPA and we're getting nothing back out of it. And when they first came into the City of Hoyok, it's dropped penny after penny. It started off at a hundred percent. I believe it was Governor Salucci. And now, and you don't think when the time for the next budget to actually come up, if you think it's going to be at the percentage rate that was promised to us when the proponents came into the City of Hoyok at twenty-five, it's down to, I think, thirteen? I mean, it's going to continue to drop and the state eventually is going to drop it. And I, and my guesstimate is it'll be dropped to nothing before our five years are up. So we will be taxing property owners and getting nothing back from the state on it. And I think it's all intertwined. So when we talk about tax rate and cutting the budget, you know, you know, it's not just about cutting firemen. And I think that's a scare tactic. It's not just cutting the police department. Nobody in this room wants to see public safety jeopardized on any level. But I mean, there has to be a, a way that the creator of the budget thinks about how to, out of the box concepts.
Good. Counselor Sullivan?
Yeah. And I understand what my fellow counselors are saying about getting out there and fighting harder for new revenue and for more revenue, but we've been fighting that fight and fighting that fight and fighting that fight and we're not generating that new revenue. But every year, it's level funding, level funding, level funding. It's not working. That's all I'm saying here. Even, we're, we're recommending two point five percent. I know those are tough cuts. If it comes back at one percent, that's still cutting one million dollars from a hundred twenty-five million dollar budget. All right? It's not asking a heck of a lot. It comes to this council out of balance, out of whack, and then it's left to us to make these cuts. And other things are negotiated, like the Quinn bill, and put in there that I don't think ever should have been given away. And then we're told, we're handcuffed. There's nothing we can do about this. There's nothing we can do about this. There's nothing we can do about this. Who negotiated those deals? Not us.
Counselor McGivern?
What I'm trying to say, and been trying to say for several years is, and that disagreeing with the thought process across the room. Although I personally, I would rather fight for the revenue and protect the services. The budget cut is not how you reduce a budget. If you want to reduce a budget, we control the city council, the ordinances. Think out of the box of how to reduce a department. How to reduce what the budget is just a reflection of the mayor paying for the service that is already on the books. Most of what is provided through this city is an ordinance form in one way or the other. You know, if, if there's, there's an ordinance for the number of police officers, okay, we don't want to cut public safety. But if you're telling the mayor, you got to reduce the budget by one percent and there are certain things he can't touch, and I'm not talking about the contracts. I'm talking about insurance and things that are out of his control. The budget busters is what they're called. Then you, you and we have to sit down and say, what can we live with? Okay? The chief of the fire department sat down and said, we're going to leave, we're going to live without engine two and came up with a scheme. I hope it works. I don't know if it will. The police department didn't say the same thing. Police department spent every dollar of overtime monies in the last two and a half months last year. Instead of saying, let's get some of this extra money into next year. It's going to be a tough year and let's use it. That's thinking out of the box. At least Chief Pond tried to think out of the box and tried to do something. Trash, we, we looked at the, the Counselor Lopez a number of times filed and we did reduce the pickup of trash. First from the business community and then second from weekly. It, it doesn't save anything because most of the people on trash detail, when they're not picking up trash, they're, they're, they're part of another detail, which oftentimes is snow removal, oftentimes is other incidents at the DPW, which is the stepchild of all the big budgets in the city. We know that. Their salaries are the worst. The number of employees from the job that they do does not equal the match as it is and the service they provide. And, and parks and rec, I think, is very, very important. I know a lot of people fight for the park in their neighborhood as ward counselors. It's very important. Where are we going to make the cuts? The permanent cuts is the question. Or do we stand together and try to make the budget work each year? Each year, we say it's, it's, it's a deficit funded budget. At that moment in time, you can make that argument, but at the end of the year, maybe not this year, there's free cash. So was it deficit funded? Was it that out of whack? If we made it through the whole year by fighting for it and by finding revenue, by using grants the best that we can, by taking additional things and by as tight, the budget is, is a snapshot each day that changes each day. It's like your checkbook at home. You make a decision one week, you make a different decision the next week, it changes the whole scheme of what was last week. That's the way you look at a budget. And yes, what we do with the budget is important. But if you want to reduce the demand on the budget, start looking at the ordinances of this city and start looking at each department and reducing the department and coming up with ideas about that. Because that's not all the mayor's job. That's our job.
Counselor Breslin?
I just, Joe, I respect you, but I just completely disagree with everything. I disagree with what you, your thought process on the budget. I think that the head of the house, the, the executive department is making the budget and all we get to do is cut it. We do not get to add into it. I don't know what Diastado did years ago or you did years ago on the trash. I don't know, but I know that there, I, I don't, I haven't seen any formal study and I know the mayor has done nothing, proposed nothing to this body that is any different. Now, we, all we, all we continue to do, I will tell you, is just go on the backs of all the property owners and homeowners, the guys working two and three jobs, and raise their taxes. We know the millions of dollars over a short period of time that we've raised over the years, as Counselor Jordan has pointed out on every occasion he had the opportunity to. But again, you know, we just, we continue to go to the homeowners and the property owners and the building owners and say, we're going to hit you again. And, and that is a major factor why we don't see businesses jamming down our doors. I mean, the tax rate, that cannot, we can't just keep going to that big pool, pool of money and saying, you know, we need more. And, you know, or we're going to lose fire depart, or we're going to lose fire personnel and you're not going to be safe, or we're going to lose the police department. You're not going to be safe. I, I vote for the Quinn bill, but as, as Counselor Sullivan has pointed out, I don't believe that the Quinn bill makes a better police officer. I think that has nothing to do with it. I think police officers, I respect immensely. We need them on the streets. There's no doubt about it. But how does a, how does a cop making more money become a better cop? I don't see that. You got to arrest people. You got to file reports. I just, I, I'm not, I'm not a proponent of cutting it, but I mean, there has to be some negotiation. The mayor told us that, that was going to be negotiation. Then he got into office and then that negotiation went down, down the tubes and we never heard of any cost savings on the Quinn bill. So, I mean, that's, those are hard, that, and, and taking away the Quinn bill per se, and again, I'm not a proponent of that, but taking that away is not taking police officers off the street, is not taking DPW personnel off the street, is not taking firemen off the street. DPW, fire do not get that incentive in the years that they work for the City of Hoyok or the more training or the more education they get. So, I mean, and I know it, it has nothing to do with us. It's a state and Revere filed the order and all that, but it's just hard, hard decisions have to be made or we, we are going to be in financial jeopardy. We're millions in the hole now. Where are we going to be? Where's that two and a half million that we need now? Where, where's it coming from? I mean, again, businesses come into town and I talk to business owners all the time, just going into the stores. And they, they, they never, I never get like, man, this, I, I love it. This is great. They're here because they're Hoyok, Hoyokers. That's why they're here. They're not here, you know, because the, the tax rate is so great and they're happy that they have a CPA. That's not happening.
On the motion?
Counselor McGivern would like to speak again?
For a third time?
For a third time?
I think Counselor Breslin just spoke for his fourth time.
That was twice. I have, I have my list. Would we like to allow Counselor McGivern to speak for a third time?
Of course.
Alls in favor? All opposed?
I'd just like to note, we've already taken a vote on this, you know.
No, this was, actually, this is to receive and refer to finance. It's still under discussion.
Don't forget.
Counselor Breslin makes some good points.
It's actually just under reconsideration still.
No, that was, we said to reconsider. We took a vote and it was...
You get to have that in finance, Joe, so.
Just on three points on Counselor Breslin. One is personally, I voted against CPA. I didn't believe it was the right thing for the city and I think Dan made the arguments prior to the ballot question, but when it came time to go into the voting booth, I did vote against it. I see good coming from it, but at the same time, I think it does, it was causing problems to a lot of small businesses and other people that are getting whacked by it. When it comes to the budget, I'm not disagreeing with the budget process or what we do or what is a challenge when it comes to the budget in terms of making cuts to the budget. What I'm saying is, is those are just temporary cuts. Sometimes they don't even last two or three months. And that's because you can, you can reduce an item in the budget and say, we don't have enough money, so we're going to take it out of this line item. But if you don't eliminate the law that makes that line item part of this city, the money just goes back in at some point when the mayor finds it. The mayor is the chief executive officer of the budget. The city council is the legislative body that adopts the laws. We need to change the laws to reconfigure what we provide service as a city to what we can afford. And that's not an easy challenge. And yes, it wouldn't, it's, there's only, outside of the three, the budget, it's not scare tactics. The three major departments are police, fire, DPW, and then, then down the line a little bit, parks and rec. After that, you know, the offices in city hall are, you know, handfuls of people. You know, working at, at well below what they deserve to be paid and doing a tremendous job. But you need to find it. You need to look at the ordinances. You need to look at the laws that create government and what the government is right now and change it. Some of it is by charter. We have a charter and rules committee. Some of it is by ordinance. We have an ordinance committee. But the budget process is just a moment in time as, and we, and we can all agree and disagree, but I think we all have the right intention when it comes to the budget. Let's do what's right. Our, our budget, you know, there's more than one way to say how much our budget has risen. It's not we write, we raise the taxes. It's the shift of taxes that are killing us. As homeowners, as business owners, and what killed us the most and is going to, going to hurt for years to come, we have to overcome is the lost amount of time. Because that value went away, but the, the ceiling itself, you know, took a hit. But the total amount of taxes base itself didn't go away. If, if that, that went away, we wouldn't have anything in terms of services that we're providing because we don't have the ability to make up that revenue overnight. That's where we fight for new growth and that's where we put our best foot forward and try to sell the city in a positive way.
Can't wait till this is in committee.
So motion is to refer to finance? It was seconded. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed to finance? No, one no. All right. Item twenty-one?
Hostile chairman.
That the O P E D meet with the city council to discuss, A, compliance with the various pilot, and B, status of the Hartwell wind development projects. To...
Either finance or DGNR.
Motion is to go to DGNR?
Second.
Seconded. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item twenty-two, from Counselor Sullivan, that the legal department clarify for the council whether council members may be excluded from executive session of the city board or commissions.
Just send it to legal for an opinion?
Receive, adopt, prefer?
Motion is to receive and adopt and refer to legal. Second? No, we're going to, we'll have it written up and sent to us. So receive, adopt, refer to legal. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item twenty-three from Counselor Sullivan, that all council members be ad hoc non-voting members of all city board and commissions and therefore allowed to participate in exec, executive session.
Charter and rules?
Send to charter and rules?
Seconded.
Charter and rules, seconded. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Twenty-four from Counselor Bartley, DPW fix the sidewalks on South Street between the following areas. This area is the CDB GNE eligibility, so...
Yeah, receive and refer to DPW?
Second.
Motion is receive and refer to, or receive and adopt and refer to DPW? Motion is receive, adopt, and refer to DPW? Alls in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item twenty-five?
Yeah, just the abbreviated reading. It's just going to DGR, Mr. President.
All right, so that the annual city council, in accordance to master general law thirty-B and the Hoyok procurement ordinance, vote to accept the offer for fifteen thousand five hundred for the said parcel. And this will go to DGNR?
Yeah, we'll, we'll take this up on twenty-six.
Should be taken up on twenty-six. Second?
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? DGNR. Item twenty-six from Counselor Breslin, that the city engineer DPW review the intersection of Hamden and Onituck Street to ensure that lighting configurations are adequate and safe.
Receive and refer to public safety?
Motion is receive and refer to public safety. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item twenty-seven from Counselor Leahy, order that the city council honor City Clerk Brenna Murphy McGee with a proclamation for be given, being given the highest designation of the master municipal clerk by the International Institute of Municipal Clerks.
Can I make a motion to receive, adopt, and send Mrs. Allen for a...
Motion is to receive and adopt to give a proclamation, under discussion or is there a second?
Under discussion.
Second.
Seconded, under discussion?
Yeah, just under discussion that Brenna has gone far above what she needed to do and she achieved the highest level of what a city clerk can do. And she took a lot of classes on her own time. So having said that, I just want to give her a proclamation on behalf of all the city counselors.
Motion is to receive and adopt. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Sure. Any council.
Adding Counselor President.
I mean, inclusive, any counselor that wants to be on it can be on this.
I think everybody should.
Lisi.
Adding Counselor President Tommen and Lisi. Item number twenty-eight, LeBron Martinez, order that to meet the MSBA deadline for March twentieth for city council approve the middle school project design phase. The joint committee will take this up. So receive and refer to the joint committee? And there'll be a meeting on this, what day?
Actually, there's a Thursday, this Thursday coming up, but it could, it could also wait for the next round, they said. But I, it's, it's, it's on the agenda for this Thursday, so we're having it.
But we, we've already received, you're just doing a... We already have something in committee for this? That's what I'm trying to... We receive and refer to committee. That's fine. I guess my question is taking it up on Thursday would be within the open meeting law for forty-eight hours? Okay, just making sure. Okay, so motion is to receive and refer to the joint committee?
Yes.
Seconded. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item twenty-nine from Counselor Lisi, that given the recent FCC ruling on net neutrality, a city council invite the representatives from HGNE to discuss the public access to broadband fiber, citywide Wi-Fi?
Receive and send to public service with a copy to the GNE.
Motion is receive, public service, and copy to HGNE with an invite to come in.
Thank you.
Seconded. Alls in favor? Seconded, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item thirty, from Counsel Lisi, that the city council adopt an ordinance that phases out and prohibits the use of plastic bags in the city.
Receive and send to ordinance?
Second.
Motion is to receive, this is it, okay. Motion is to receive and send to ordinance, and seconded, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item thirty-one, from Counsel Lisi, that the city council adopt an ordinance that creates a new...
Retail center.
Retail, yeah, I got to get my glasses on, I'm having trouble, but yeah, that's fine. Retail Center in Zone and create an RC District for Whiting Farms Quarter heading down to the mall. Third time filing due to, okay, so refer to...
Ordinance, please.
Ordinance. Motion is to refer to ordinance, it was seconded, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item thirty-two, from Counsel Lisi, that the date of the special permit was received, that the council appear next on the item of the committee agenda that will make it easier for public to see and how quickly the council is moving through the permitting process.
Receive and adopt, I think that this change should be fairly easily achieved by Ryan, just putting the date next to our committee agendas.
Okay, so motion is receive and adopt, item thirty-two.
Please.
Is there a second?
Second.
Item is seconded, all's in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Under discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry, under discussion, Counsel McGivern?
I understand the intent, sorry. I understand the intent, but who's going to be doing this?
Ryan. When, so if I may?
Counsel McGivern, you're done?
Committee agendas, I'm all set, answer my question.
It just came to my attention...
I'm all set, you answer my question.
I'll still just explain it to everybody so we're on the same page. So it came to my attention that when special permits appear on our committee agendas, that there's no date. Usually when a council files something and the committee has it on the agenda, it says the date that it was received by the full council and sent to committee. But this doesn't happen for special permits, but we are moving fairly quickly through special permits, and I think it's a nice way to signal to the business community that we are open for business and we are expediting the permit process. So just get that date on our internal committee agenda so that there's a record of when it came to the city council, and then when we disperse of it.
All right, so motion is to receive, adopt, and send to...
Ryan.
Our administrative assistant. It was seconded, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item thirty-three, from Counsel Lisi, that the city council, in accordance with the tax factor, send out notifications via mail or phone to all residents notifying them of the third and fourth quarter tax bills will be coming to April first and will come due on May first due to the council's inability to set a tax rate.
Receive and adopt.
Motion is to receive and adopt.
Second.
Under discussion.
Under discussion, Counsel Lisi.
Thanks, so I got several phone calls from elderly residents who are on fixed incomes asking, when is the next tax bill coming out? It was already mid-January, they were concerned, they knew and were anticipating it coming due in February first, but due to our inability, again, it's not placing blame, it's just saying we have not had the ability to set a tax rate, that people need to be planning for the third and fourth quarter tax bills coming out at the same time and that they're going to be responsible for paying both those bills at the same time. I think that we owe it to our residents to put that message out there. The seniors who called me, I said that, well, there were newspaper reports, they're like, well, you know, I don't get the newspaper and I'm not online. And so they had thought it would be appropriate for the city to put out a notification. I think mail may be costly, and so I wanted to create the option here to send out a phone call through the emergency messaging system perhaps, but we need to get the message out to residents, especially those on a fixed budget so that they can anticipate the double hit that they're going to get in April and then due on May first.
Counsel Leahy?
Yeah, if I could, just through the chair, the maker of this order said that she's not calling out anybody, so I'm not exactly sure if she's read this order, but it does, it calls out the city council to as, or to where, I don't think it's, I don't think it's our issue. I think the fact that we presented a couple of different issues to set that, and one of them is to take out the money out of retirement two weeks before Christmas, and to this day, I think that was an awful choice. You know, I too received several phone calls from elderly people and people that are on fixed incomes that see right through this order. I would, I certainly think that people should know that they're going to be getting hit with two different tax bills. I certainly think that's the job of the tax collector. But putting blame on the city council, I think is just insulting.
Counsel Sullivan?
I would support, I would strike the last line and put the mayor's inability to balance the budget, and I would support it then.
Counsel McGivern?
I thought we just adopted an order that the robocalls would be only for emergencies.
I, is the ordinance just emergencies or just not?
I'm not sure.
I think it's for the department that has to put it out and not through the mayor's office. I do believe that's how it was designed. But I could be wrong, it could be emergency, we can check that. This could be deemed an emergency, Joe, depending on how you say it.
Oh, it's, you know, it's, I mean, the fact that because we didn't pass some money to allow the assessors to give us the true budget itself, which is what the tax rate is actually set before us. It's the only thing we vote on, is classification to shift the tax rate. But because we didn't allow that to happen by either retirement money or the stabilization fund, we're now borrowing money, which is going to have another impact on when we come back to try to set the tax rate, because that could be up to a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars that, you know, they're anticipating borrowing plus interest. But I agree, I mean, there's no one finger to point at anyone in this situation. You know, it's an anomaly, it's unique, the committee has said this before, but the company that is independently looking at it has been looking at it very closely the last couple of weeks, and they should come up, I hope come up with an answer within a week or so, so we can somehow get back on page. But the point, regardless of what we do now, nothing's happening until the fourth quarter. And I just hope that all the banks keep our money in escrow and don't try to double our escrow next year, you know, when they see the bill that goes out for the fourth quarter. But I do agree, why don't we just say, hey, you know, there's a bill coming in the fourth quarter that's going to reflect both? And stay tuned to Channel fifteen if you want the explanations of why it happened.
Anyone else? Counsel Tomlin?
Yeah, I agree, it's a good order. The only thing is that some people I've talked to, actually, some people set their money on paying at a certain time, and some people actually did. I know that the tax collector brought it up before, you know, you can't do this, we can't, you can't pay it ahead of time and all that, but people are, people are paying it ahead of time, you know?
You can.
You can, right, but I don't think a lot of people know that, that they can pay their third quarter bill already, even though they don't have a tax bill. And people I've talked to, several people have done that so they don't get hit with a double bill in May, you know, because some people have that money set aside already. So I think that's one thing that's got to get out there too, that, you know, the more money that comes in is the less money down the road that we'll have to borrow too, if it hasn't already been borrowed. So that's an important thing, because people, you know, some people don't want to wait till May. You know, they have the money already set aside to pay their third quarter taxes, and they are doing it.
Counsel Leahy?
Yeah, thank you, just to piggyback what Counsel Tomlin said. In fact, I know a lot of different people that want to pay and they're going to pay. We did get a letter and we got a follow-up letter from the tax collector saying that she didn't want checks to go stagnant or stale or something to that effect. The people at home should know that they can certainly pay their taxes, just for the fact they're not getting an actual bill, they can certainly pay it, so they won't get double hit, thank you.
So with that, just for people who are watching, it'll be taped and replayed. The request is that we have the tax collector, the way the order reads is that the city council, in coordination with the tax collector, send out notification. So really, it would be the tax collector sending out notification with regards to the delay in billing, just so everyone knows on TV. So what we're trying to say is, since the tax bills aren't coming out yet because the tax rate hasn't been sent, doesn't mean you cannot pay your tax bill. So you can come down to the tax collector, pay your bill, and they'll put a credit into the munis system. So that way, when the bill comes out, you'll have already paid that quarter, and then you pay what is due at that point in time, and you're not getting hit with a double bill. We are all receiving that call. As I talked with Counsel Tomlin, I think it was last meeting, some banks are actually sending a check to the homeowner, saying that, oh, there's been a reduction in taxes because to the escrow, they think that their tax rate has gone down. So therefore, they're reallocating and sending a refund back to the homeowner. That's a no-no. In essence, they need that money to help pay the tax bill and then tell them that, don't reset my rate because it is what it is. So there is confusion, I think we should send out notice, I think the phone system would be one, I think, whatever way we can do it. Gas, electric would be another way, however, I think we're all in agreement in the sense that we have to send out notice to try and help homeowners understand that. They can come in, pay the bill that would normally bill, it might be off by whatever number, but at least they have that credit set up to help them not get hit twice.
Blaming on the city council just insists here.
It's not blaming, it's just saying we had the inability. I specifically chose that language because we did not have the ability to set the tax rate without a balanced budget.
I see through it.
So how about we, for a friendly amendment, to say that the tax collector and/or HGNE?
Well, the tax collector is going to cost money, it's going to cost, you know, a stamp, you know, Peter Tomlin wants to hear that, but gas, electric is free for us to send anything out.
Right, but I guess what I'm trying to say is the tax collector can go to the emergency phone system as suggested, that's not going to cost us anything, and this would be an emergency, this does impact homeowners. And we can ask HGNE if they can send out a notice in order to try and help cut the costs. So that would be one friendly amendment I'd like to add.
Do you want to just say that the HGNE in coordination with the tax collector then?
Sure.
Yep, HGNE in coordination with the tax collector, send out a notification via mail and phone then?
Via mail and/or however, yep, I think that's fine.
And/or phone.
To all residents, notify them that the third and fourth quarter tax bills will be coming out together on the first...
And will come due on May first, but residents have the ability to pay early in the treasurer's office? Sorry, tax collector's office.
So will be due on May first, striking out due to the city council, send out tax rate, and then referring to your last sentence would be, say it again so we have it on the record, sorry.
So period, and then say residents are welcome...
Taxpayers.
Taxpayers.
Sure, taxpayers are welcome to pay early.
Prepay.
Prepay.
Prepay, yeah, are welcome to prepay in the tax collector's office.
Can we also mention something about the escrow, if they get a check in the mail, what to do with that?
Yeah, I think that's what HGNE will have to draft up and send out, and I think however the tax collector wants to send out that message via the phone, whatever time limit they have, but yeah, that, to address that as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
So with the amendments, first on the amendments, with regards to striking out the city council and HGNE, and then striking out after, at the end of May first period, striking out due to the city council and ability to set tax rate, and putting in the sentence that taxpayers are welcome to prepay in order to contact the collector's office. On that amendment, all's in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed? And this is going to be, once again, to receive, adopt?
Refer to the tax collector and the GNE.
Refer to tax collector and HGNE. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Should be Bartley's voice on the phone call, I think, this time around, though.
What do I do?
Your voice on the phone call this time?
Item thirty-four.
President, make a motion to suspend the rules to allow us to take up items thirty-four through forty-one as a package.
Second.
Thirty-four to forty-one, suspend the rules, take them up as a package, I will read them once I get them on. All right, item thirty-four, in accordance to Mass General Law four-four, section C fifty-three-A, the city council hereby accept the cops hiring grant thirty-five, the Shannon grant thirty-six, that the city council hereby approve payments in prior year's bill to Grinnan Barrett and for government portraits, the payments will come from the city hall supply budget line. Thirty-seven, that there hereby be appropriate transfer of eight hundred and forty-four dollars and eighty-eight cents from patrolmen to injured on duty. Thirty-eight, be transfer of two thousand twenty-six dollars and eighty-five cents from firefighters to injured on duty. Thirty-nine, two thousand six hundred and ninety-one dollars and ten cents from various items to other items. Item forty is six thousand two hundred and thirty, six thousand two hundred and thirty-seven dollars from local inspector to building commissioner. Item forty-one is two thousand four hundred from office and supplies to temporary seasonal. Is motion receive?
Motion is to receive before committee on finance, if I could, real quick.
All right, so a motion is to refer to finance, under discussion, Counsel McGivern?
Real quick, Mr. President, item thirty-five, I anticipate a discussion, possible healthy discussion on the Shannon grant this year. Shannon grant is used for a number of things, one of the things I want to be upfront, it's used for is restorative justice in the schools. And I think that's something that is doing some good and some harm to our school system itself. And that's something I'll say for the committee on finance itself, because I have a number of police officers and teachers that have brought this to my attention, that there are some issues going on, and I'd just like to know more about the relation to the Shannon grant itself and relation to what the city budget is or should be doing or isn't doing. If that is a healthy discussion, I think Counsel Sullivan's order, Ryan, will put on the agenda as the last item with the promise that we may or may not get to it. I was going to ask that we, with the water department, have a meeting on our second Monday of the month, but it sounds like a couple committees are looking for that night, which is fine. And we'll just, we'll do one finance committee this month and hold off on the other two orders unless we get to Counsel Sullivan's on this coming Monday.
Yeah, sounds good.
What's on this coming Monday?
Meeting, finance.
Finance meetings, our finances reserved the two off Mondays of the month.
Right.
That's the traditional way we always did it, the same way the ordinance committee reserves Tuesday. But DGR, public safety and public service especially, like to sometimes meet on Monday, which is good. So we'll forego the second Monday this month, because I've heard at least one or one committee looking at that date. Ryan, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, and you didn't call me? I'll talk to you later.
So what's the date, it's the twelfth?
Finance is the twelfth. Okay, we'll try and get through everything but the water department, just depends on how long the Shannon grant... Oh, it's going to be a healthy agenda, but how long it's going to take to get into, we'll get to it, Mike, we'll...
Yeah, I'm fine with that. Another question for the maker, though, if I could? Yeah? Joe, number thirty-six, would you consider taking that up tonight and just getting done with it? These poor people, this poor business has been owed money for a year or more.
I'll second that, term of item number thirty-six.
No objection?
Where's the money? Is there money to pay it?
Wasn't there a campaign on that question a while ago?
It's already in the city hall supplies budget line. I don't think we should leave local business.
Well, the part of the problem is, is we're approving a prior bill, but we have no appropriation of where it's coming from.
Just procedurally...
Because there's no free cash, I think is the big problem.
Right.
I think what the counselor, and correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, but you're requesting that we look to that line item to take the money from it to then pay for the portrait. We're just requesting it, therefore, we actually need an order coming out from the mayor in appropriation, saying from line item XXX to YYY in order to then fund it. Right now, it's just a request, so we are receiving, referring to finance, which then hopefully we'll get the number in an order, but it's just a request, we can receive it, but nothing will happen until we get that request, just so we're clear on it.
Whatever your pleasure.
No, I agree with you, Mike, but I, knowing that the money wasn't there, I couldn't see voting on it. I didn't think we had a vote on it tonight unless it helps the cause. voting on it, I didn't think we had a vote on it tonight unless it helps the cause, I mean, I did talk to Rory, but it was about three weeks ago, and I, I know they've worked hard on it, and I think a lot of things are kind of on hold because of the free cash situation.
So, motion is to refer to finance, thirty-four to forty-one.
Second.
It was seconded, all's in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That brings us to late files.
There isn't one.
There is one late file.
Good job, Dan.
In one hundred and ten parts, no, I'm only kidding, let's see here, it's a late file from the city solicitor, and it's a communication on July nineteenth, two thousand seventeen, this city law department received a grievance from, should I, should I read this out loud, or should we just refer to, it's a grievance, or?
I would say no.
Alright, so how about I just say we received a communication from the law department on a grievance, and therefore, we'll send it to...
Finance?
I'm trying to read it quickly to see if this needs like an executive session.
To the union grievance?
Yeah, that's why I don't...
We can't do that anyway.
We don't do anything with that, right?
Fine, I'm getting it for the first time, Joe, so I'm just trying to read the parties.
Maybe send it to the law department.
Well, it's saying appropriation requesting funds for cost of living, it said appropriation is not granted, the parties agreed to commence negotiations, resolve the grievance, yeah, it's not really anything we...
Send it to the lawyer and to the mayor, because he has to appropriate, not us.
Well, Paul, Paul's saying it to us.
This is just a letter, is it asking for action?
Parties met, it said appropriation request is not, so he's looking for an appropriation.
The solicitor does not have the power to appropriate.
Duty, if appropriation is not granted, the parties agreed to commence negotiations, resolve the grievance without said agreement, precluding association's right to pursue administrative civil legal procedure. It's a communication, I will send it to finance, because it's a union agreement, and they're looking, it looks like, for an appropriation, which we don't have.
Okay, so for informational purposes, awaiting the appropriation request.
So, we'll send that to finance for informational purposes. All's in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? There are no other late files, or nothing else, is there a motion? Motion is to adjourn, all's in favor? All opposed?